Okay, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 6th. Time is 6 o'clock. We're here in the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone's making a recording of the meeting, please let Jason know. I apologize for last meeting. I did not have the Pledge of Allegiance and I will not make that mistake again. Buddy, will you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Twice.
One to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Role call. In attendance, I am myself Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Clerk Diane Gale, C A O Carl Steinhardt is on Zoom. Assistant C A O Nadine Signoni is here. Lisa Anderson is here. So everybody's here. And we'll start off with public comments. Anyone in the room with a public comment tonight? None in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so we have an appointment coming up at 6:15. So in the interim, we'll take care of our routine business and pay some bills. First, we have to acknowledge Payables Warrant Number 2411B dated 10/30 in the amount of $3,604,975.11. And I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated 10/30, 2023.
Oh, I'll make motion to accept minutes since Mr. Perron was not here.
I will second the motion. It's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, I.
Diane Gale, I.
Jason Perron abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion items and action items. Acknowledge the VFW Veterans Day Parade Saturday, November 11th. Lineup is 10:30. I assume the parade is at 11:00 and it'll start from across from Summer House and go down to the center. Next, Wednesday, December 13th. Council on Aging Holiday Party in the Senior Center. That's usually a good time and the Select Board and other town staff, the C A O, the Assistant C A O usually end up serving meals that day to the folks that come to that jubilee. Next, we have to approve the elderly rate application for for Grand View Street. From a Mr. Thompson. So I'm assuming this is as sewer commissioners to approve this elderly rate application.
That's correct.
First one through the sewer.
Yeah.
I'll make motion to accept the elderly application.
Excellent idea. Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, I.
Jason Perron, I.
Diane Gale, I.
I wasn't sure if you'd be reviewing for a week, so.
Okay.
There's an original to sign somewhere.
I'm sure it's in a book that we usually have. It'll be on the counter tomorrow. Okay, next we had a request under the U S P S E U unit to combine half day Monday. There it is. Half day before Christmas and half day before New Year's acknowledging the Scribner's error in the agenda. We all knew what they meant. And a half day before New Year's and combine them into a full day off to be used Tuesday, December 26, 2023. This is something they've been doing for as long as I can remember. So they're requesting to take the half day before Christmas and a half day before New Year's and then roll them into the singular day of December 26th and they would work the full day on the day before Christmas and the half day before New Year's. And I would need a motion though to approve it.
No one has any objections. I'll make motion to approve the request.
And I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, I.
Jason Perron, I.
Diane Gale, I.
Great. I have a couple other things in here that weren't on my, unless I'm just missing them, but the a note here from the Southwick Firemen's Association, their annual Christmas party at the Legion is December 18th. And we did talk about this Senior Center Jingle Bell Jubilee, so we're in good shape. Next is to approve a change order in contract between the cemetery and regal tree and shrub experts due to need to take down additional rotten trees. You have some color on that?
That's already, it's already the existing contract that's underway with the help from the Community Preservation Committee funded it. So the dollars are there in the original appropriation. It's just that they discovered when they were doing the work that there were additional trees that had to be taken down that were over and above the ones that had been identified in the process.
Okay. So do we know the new amount or?
Yes, I believe Lisa can confirm it's 9,600. Lisa, does that sound right?
It's 10,600.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's within the C B C appropriation from Town Meeting?
Yes.
Would anyone like to set forth a motion per se?
I will make a motion to approve the change order, the contract to remove the trees, the additional trees in the cemetery.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, I.
Jason Perron, I.
Diane Gale, I.
Okay. New business. Jason?
I have nothing right now.
Diane?
Nothing.
Carl?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's a good thing we got those interviews or we'd be setting a bad tone. We'd be out of here at 6:30. Nadine? Okay, let's roll right to old business. Marijuana dispensary. Obviously, we're heading to Town Meeting. We did receive an email. It was sent to two of the Select Board members. I forwarded it to the third with a request for a host community agreement. I have not replied back yet. I was going to check with Carl which one of us should reply back, but I think we should. It would be prudent to wait until we have the results of Town Meeting that would grant zoning to allow a dispensary before we start negotiating a host community agreement. I don't expect that any negotiation for a host community agreement would be arduous nor prolonged given the shackles put on us by the CCC at this point anyway. So we'll await the outcome of that meeting, which is in less than one month from today, being that today's the 6th. Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine. Makes total sense.
Select Board Goals and Objectives. Are there any updates this week?
I think there's plenty on there.
Not for me.
No, not for me.
We're just working on things and they're still plodding along.
Okay.
There's things that need to be wrapped up.
Land license for American Legion is still ongoing. Right of First Refusal still ongoing. Well, we don't have to worry about Town Administrator Recruitment Panel because we're doing that in five minutes. T-Mobile Hometown Grants, Application Review Authorization and Pursuit. Any update?
I will be putting together based on the few projects that were discussed, the boathouse and the garage shed, whatever you'd like to call it for the cemetery. I've got no further responses. I'll put one more out just to see if there's any more interest and then I will put together those two applications. You send them off.
Thank you very much. Protocols?
Can I back up for a second? To the recruitment process, we still have the panel outstanding.
Correct. Let's come back to that right at the end of this stuff. Good point.
Now clock is slow at 6:14 now because it's 6:15 now.
That's right, twice a day. It is 6:15.
Yeah.
Clock is slow. No wonder everybody's in the lobby waiting for us to start the meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go now to our 6:15 appointment. Interview with Community Paradigm Associates LLC in person. That might be this gentleman right here. Please.
Thank you. We also have Principal of our firm Bernie Lynch and Senior Associate Julie Jacobson on the screen. Okay, with us here and our other Principal Sharon Tharri. Couldn't see her here, but behind the door, sorry Sharon. Yeah, first of all, I'll move the door a little bit so we can't see. I do see Kyle. Kyle, how you doing? Good to see you.
How are you, John? How are you Bernie? Julie, how's everybody doing? Sharon, haven't met you. Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
And let's do some introductions here. I'm Doug Moglen. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Jason Perron, Vice Chairman.
Thank you for coming.
And just for a while, this is Nadine Signoni. She's the Assistant C A O. Ingo Hoteling from Economic Development. Buddy Vecchio, Resident Expert. Joe Diddy, Chairman of Finance Committee.
Well, if I may, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to be both in Zoom and in person. I just wanted to give a quick introduction of sort of who we are and why and what our process looks like perhaps, but John is there to dig into some of the details and obviously we're here to answer any questions as well. As pointed out, my name is Bernie Lynch and just by way of history and background about Community Paradigm, I started Community Paradigm back in 2014 after about 30 years as a municipal manager myself, serving in the town of Chelmsford for about 20 years and about eight years as a city manager for the city of Lowell. When I left Lowell, I decided I wanted to keep my hand in municipal government and help out wherever I could in terms of various projects, maybe a recruitment here and there and to do some teaching. I was teaching at UMass Lowell at the time and I was recently, had recently been engaged by Suffolk University to teach in their public administration program as well. Little did I know back in 2014, the extent of which there was a need for consulting services in the area of municipal recruitments. I think we're all, and Carl, you must be one of the young ones that is just now retiring because everybody else was retiring over the last number of years, so.
That's correct. And I'm also one of those Suffolk University nighttime students from the 80s.
There you go. So everything sort of connects here. And so we started Community Paradigm back in 2014, really started taking our recruitments in 2000, at the end of 2015. And since that time, we've become the most active recruitment firm municipal government in the state. At this point, we've been involved in over 100 town manager, town administrator recruitments. And we have another roughly 40 to 50 recruitments in other areas. Finance directors, public works, police chiefs, fire chiefs. Done some work for a number of state agencies. So we've been out there working municipalities, helping them find people for these senior executive positions. In addition to that, we do work in the area of public management and government relations work where we can. Again, when I started this, it was basically me doing this work. Since that time, you can see that you have four members of the team here with you tonight. And we have a number of other former managers, graduate students and other individuals that are involved in Community Paradigm, but these are the four people that you will be working with on your recruitment if you decide to go with Community Paradigm. Again, my background is in municipal government. You've got John there in front of you. John started working with us in 2019, I think it was, 2018. When he had left his position, he could talk a little bit about his background if he, if he so chooses, but he's a former municipal manager. Julie is new to the team. Just this year, she left her position with the town of Auburn as a town manager, having been there for, I think, roughly 12, 13 years. Yep. And prior to that, she was the Assistant City Manager for the City of Worcester. And held other positions with City of Worcester in the Chamber of Commerce out there. Sharon comes with a little bit different background. She has been involved in municipal government by from the, from the enemy side of working for, with the press. She was a journalist. She was an editor for a major daily newspaper here in, in the Commonwealth as well as has background in communications, working in the financial industry. So, you know, we come in understanding municipal government, knowing how, what the job is all about. Three of us have sat in the chair that Carl is in and the next you know, administrator will be, will be sitting in. And Sharon comes with the background of covering municipalities for 25 years and being involved and knowledgeable about how municipal government works. And so that's, that's who we are. Let me just talk very briefly about our process and then really get into the questions. We come into every community with the, with the belief that we don't know anything about that community. We know a little bit about Southwick, obviously. We know that Carl has been there for a good long time. But we come in beginning to, you know, with a blank slate. We want to hear from the stakeholders of the community as to you know, what, what's going on in the town and what you're looking for from the next municipal administrator position. And so we spend time talking to you as members of the board. We talk to members of the staff to understand what they do and what their issues are. We will talk to Carl and understand his perspective as to what the primary issues are. We believe citizen engagement is an important part of the process, so we generally do some type of community survey and occasionally a forum, although very frankly, we find that the surveys are much more productive to us and giving us a sense of what people are thinking as far as issues and skillsets that are needed. And we pull all that together and we generate a position statement. I think we sent you a copy. I believe we probably sent you, I probably sent you the South Hadley Position Statement that we generated and we use that in a number of different ways. First off, we think it's a great process to go through. Carl's been there for a good long time. The issues that were there in the town when Carl was there, was started are different than they are today. The skillsets that you need might be a little different because, you know, someone's going to attack these problems a little bit differently than, perhaps Carl's been issuing these. And so you're going to determine that you need something, that people are going to turn, that need something from the next municipal administrator that we need to be able to convey. So it's a great process to go through. As all of us have left our positions, we realize that, you know, people need to think about, okay, what's the next person need to be like? We then use that document as a recruiting tool. We go out and we find people that are interested in this position. What we're very pleased with is we've been in this business for a good long time. We know all the municipal managers out there. We've been doing this recruitment for about eight years now. Seven or eight years. We know who's out there in the marketplace looking for positions or wants to move up into this type of position. We also know the people, the new managers that are out there, or the potential managers through the Suffolk MMA Local Government Certificate Program. We're both John and I teach and John, in fact, is the Program Director, Program Coordinator for that program. So we know the people that are out there in the marketplace. We think it's important that we get the most diverse pool that we can. There are underrepresented groups out there. In people of color and women. That's why we're really excited to have Julie onboard because Julie was one of the founders of the Women's League Government Organization here in the state and most recently the President of that organization. So she brings a tremendous amount of knowledge and connections to the table in terms of getting, helping us get that diverse pool that we think is so important. We're sorry to see her retire from Auburn, but we're thrilled to have her come and join us. So we take all of that to try to build a pool of candidates that we will then present to a screening committee that you will appoint. I heard you talking about that panel a little bit earlier, that you're going to be talking about that after this, your interviews tonight. We work hand in hand with that committee to review the candidates that we have. Process. They help you by screening down the candidates that we bring forward. And we will bring all of the candidates that we receive to that committee. We'll give background on the people that we know and we know just about everybody that's in the business. We'll help them go through the interview process and what comes out of that is a, you know, will be the finalist that will be interviewed by you. And you know, before they get to you, we do further vetting of those candidates by contacting their references to identify, you know, what their skillsets are, what their strengths, what their weaknesses and some examples of the types of work that they do. I tell people all the time, the screening committee will spend about an hour interviewing each one of these candidates that we, that they decide to interview. We then spend probably somewhere in the vicinity of three to four hours with their references, talking to them, trying to understand who those candidates are. If there's anything that we should know about that will, would disqualify them. But also hopefully we've already identified that, but hopefully more importantly, what their type, what their skills are, what their background is, how they attack problems. And you know, what are the types of projects that we can look at that would sort of demonstrate all of that to you? And we convey that to you in a report. Again, I think the position statement that we do, the connections that we have, the reference work that we do really differentiates us from the way many other firms go about this. And then we work with you to sort of go through the interview process yourself to help you choose the best candidate and where there is a technical resource for you for the for the, you know, contract negotiations that will be necessary. So that's, you know, that's really it in a nutshell. The whole process from start to finish, finish being the selection of somebody and signing them up takes about 14, 15 weeks to do it right. And you know, we sent all of that along in our, in our proposal and we're happy to speak to to that tonight with any questions you might have. And if I've missed anything, John, Sharon, or Julie, please jump in, but I think we're here tonight more to answer your questions and make sure that you understand who we are and what we do.
A lot of points I'd like to make in addition to what Bernie's put on the table is the reference checks. We'll do the reference checks on all the finalists before you do your interviews. Many firms, you know, do a reference check of only the final candidate after. So you'll have a background of these candidates prior to you interviewing the candidate going forward. So I think that's critical. You know, in a review. I also want to, you know, stress the fact we're a recruitment firm. So, you know, I was saying this the other night that I had an HR director from Cape Cod speaking on one of my classes recently and he talked about the fact that personnel is either trapping or hunting. So the old way was trapping. You put an ad out there and you let people come to you. Now it's about hunting. It's about getting people to come, you know, to recruit, to find people so that you can bring them in. That's what we do as a firm. So again, with our connections, Julie in particular coming in, having just recently retired. She was just a recent manager of the Massachusetts Municipal Management Association, the Managers Group, you know, as well as being active in the Women Leading Government Group. So she's got a lot of more recent connections. I'm only five years out. So I've been retired about four and a half years. And so our connections are constant. They're real today with the people we deal with. And with Bernie and I involved in the Suffolk University program, as he said, I'm the coordinator program. We're having 125 new students every single year, both through our finance seminar and our certificate program. So we're meeting on a regular basis, a lot of, you know, officials out there, you know, that go through what we do. So there's a lot of those connections. So we feel we've established the connections. The other thing is we're the only firm, and I think Kyle can attest that, but we're the only firm that sends out an email whenever we put out a notice of a position open for a town administrator, town manager or C A O in your case. We send that note out to every single manager and assistant manager that we have on our list, you know, within the state. So we've developed that list, you know, to get it out there. So again, we try to be more proactive, you know, in the firms out there. We've done a lot of work in this part of the state. I'm here tonight, you know. This is not, you know, that long a ride. And, you know, I live in a small town. I live in a town of Bolton, you know, 5,000 people. I serve on a couple smaller committees in the town, so I get an understanding. My career was a little bit different from Bernie and Julie in that I started in small towns. So I was a town administrator for about 35 years. But I was in a town of Pepperell for several years and then I was in a town of Harvard for 13 years. So I was in Harvard when Fort Devens closed and became Devens of today. So I had a part, you know, in all that. I did 13 years in a town of 5,000 people. I did, you know, several years in a town of 10,000 people. And then I went to the city of Marlborough, you know, as an Assistant Superintendent of Schools for several years. Then I finished my career as a town manager in Ashland, which was 17,000 people. And then I retired out of Burlington, which was a little bit larger community in that sense. But I have the small town background. I live in a small town. I get the concept of, you know, the way things are, you know, in a smaller town. I understand the role of the Select Board, you know, in a town like this. And so we work at that. We try to get that understanding. You'll see us here. You know, I'm here tonight. You'll see us come in, meet face to face. You know, with, I'll meet face to face with several of the department heads, you know, coming in here and try to get that feel. I've been, I was driving around town. I forgot about the darkness issue, you know. Came in and it was, you know, you know, usually driving, used to driving around 4:30 and it seemed like. But you know, we're back to darkness and, but you know, so we'll have that, that visibility, you know, here and and you'll have our cell phones. You'll be able to call us at any time, speak to us and, you know, have that contact going through. So just a few extra points to make on top of Bernie's, but certainly we're here to address, you know, any questions you may have.
Julie and Sharon, do you want to add anything? Before we break out into questions?
Sure. My role is primarily working on that position statement. So what you see there, I that's a lot of what I'm doing. I do a deep dive using my prior research skills and my writing and communication skills to dig into all the documents on the website. I usually send out a questionnaire to department heads. I'm involved in the conversations with board members, committee members, trying to learn more about the community, but also looking at the master plan, looking at the town meeting warrants. You know, just kind of doing a deep dive into your website and gaining as much knowledge as we can so that we can then share that with candidates and use it to pull in and attract more candidates for you.
And she's also a master at talking at the references. You know, with that skill she has, she actually, she's, she does a lot of our reference checking, you know, and talking with people. And she just has a skill to be able to pull things out of candidates. So we don't just call somebody and spend five minutes and say, hey, did you work with? Or did you work for? And we spend 45 minutes to an hour talking to that person and trying to pull more information. So that we, you get that full report from us at the end on each of the candidates.
Yeah, no, similar to that, and I'm sorry Julia, just jumping to that. The, the conversations that we have with the board members, the one-on-one, each one of you, you know, either Sharon or Sharon and John or Sharon and Julie or me, you know, we'll be doing these, these conversations with you that will, you know, an hour to go through it and say, okay, and more if you want, but you know, it could be whenever you want. Day, night, weekend, holiday. We'll sit down and we'll, we'll talk to you. We want to understand what you want from this position and what you want for the community. And there's, there's quite a bit of time that's dedicated to understanding what the community wants, what the board wants. So that we, you know, this isn't just a matter of throwing an ad together, putting it in the paper. As John said, we reach out to all of the current members of the Managers Association. And then we have this database that we've developed. I mean, we get, I think, 4,000 hits a month on our And then we have this database that we've developed, I mean, we get, I think, four thousand hits a month on our website. From across the country, mostly here in Massachusetts, but people are checking, people are in touch with us because they want to get into the business. We're sort of a go-to for them for that, so just a side point, Julie.
That's good, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to meet you, hi Carl, nice to see you.
Hi Julie.
So I just, I just want to add a couple of things and to John's point, it's interesting because my career, as Bernie mentioned. I was the Assistant City Manager in Worcester and that's the second largest city in New England, just from former government. But a lot of the municipal operations are the same as in a small government, you know, you still have the same laws, you still have the same types of operations. So after twenty-some-odd years in the city of Worcester, I went to the town of Auburn for twelve years. But I, the whole entire time, for thirty years, I lived in the town of Paxton, which is under five thousand residents. And I was a, I chaired the Open Space Committee in Paxton, I was a member of the Planning Board, I was on the School Building Committee. So I too understand, being in a smaller town, Paxton has three selectmen. And from working in those three communities, in Paxton as a volunteer and in Auburn and Worcester, obviously as in a professional role. I understand that the needs in each community are really unique and they're really different. And I think that's why, to reiterate what Bernie has said and what John has said, it's so important for us to hear from you. To hear from your current administrator, to hear from Carl, to hear from you, to hear from your residents, what are the issues that are unique to your community? And we know it's going to be different in a smaller town, but again, there are some issues that permeate every municipality in the state. So I think it's important, you know, for you to understand that all of us being former town managers and sharing with her experience. We've experienced a lot of the things that you go through, that Carl's gone through, that future managers will go through. It's, it's certainly been a challenge and just to wrap up, I did retire in February, well, the end of January. And I failed, I, I didn't last very long as a retiree. Pardon me, because I just like municipal government. So I came back into it, I'm still in touch with many of the managers across the state. And I had the pleasure, due to COVID, which was not a pleasure, but the pleasure of serving as the president of the Mass Municipal Association. Municipal Managers Association for two years actually, which is great because. I would say that I had the opportunity to meet every single town manager and town administrator in the entire state and work with them for two years. So I do have a lot of good friends, a lot of networking. I'm still on the Women Leading Government, which I was a founding member, I chaired it for several years and I just couldn't leave it. I think it's an important organization, so to reiterate what John has said and what Bernie said. My contacts are current, I understand the current needs of town managers and town administrators. Having just been retired about six months ago, so thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. And I apologize for my voice, I'm a little hoarse tonight, just getting over gold.
No problem. Okay. How do you want to do this, Mary, you want to open up the floor to questions?
Sure.
That's what we have, want to make sure, you know, you can ask anything you want of us, so, okay, feel free. Diane, you want to start us off?
Sure, we'll get into some of the area things first. You're currently working on a position in Southampton, which is in our vicinity.
Correct.
How's that been proceeding, are you getting a lot of candidates, do you get them from all over, where do you see them coming from right now?
So Bernie's serving as lead on that, I'll ask him to address that one.
Sure, yes, we are doing it in Southampton, we're also doing the town of Hampton, Hampden, excuse me. That we just, that we just started on, so we're sort of doing some work out in that, that region. In, in the case of Southampton, it's, it's a little bit different, in a few different ways. You know, in terms of the size, it's pretty comparable probably, but salary structure is a little bit different, form of government's a little bit different. And we've been getting some candidates. It's, look, I know, you know, we want to be truthful with everybody about this. It's a very tough recruiting environment right now. It's hard to fill many positions, private sector or public sector, particularly in the municipal sector. The, I had the opportunity to serve on the Lieutenant Governor Palito's Task Force on municipal workforce needs. And this was something that we, we spent quite a bit of time talking about, how do we get more people into municipal government? And so we, it is challenging, in the case of Southampton. We have, I believe, at last count, about eight applicants so far. We have a bit of ways to go though, because many people wait until the very last day to, to apply. And so we, we're anticipating that we'll have, you know, somewhere between ten and twenty, thereabouts. And, and I haven't, you know, I gave, spoke to Southampton recently about some of this, that, of what they're going to get. But it is a challenging, what, what makes it challenging is one, the market is tough. The other is that geography really enters into this. You have a number of smaller communities out your way that the administrative position. Isn't necessarily as professional as you have in Southwick. Or is, you know, Gibson is up in Southampton. Or certainly as Lisa Wong is over in South Hadley. You know, they're not necessarily interested in moving to more, a position with more authority. Some of these very small towns. The other issue you have is that people are, many people are at retirement age. And they're just sort of spending their last few years in working in the community in which they're working in. You also have some cities out that way and they don't necessarily translate out into town administrators. So it really requires that outreach that, that we try to do. By, you know, reaching out to all of the, the communities, looking outside the box. We do have a number of candidates that come to us, or potential candidates that come to us, they may be finance directors. Town planners, D P W directors, that are interested in moving up into the next position. And so they may be, those are the types of candidates that we see as potential candidates that could look at a, a position like this in Southwick. That we, that we're aware of, that we will, that we will reach out to. But I'm not going to, you know, say that there's a, you know, this is groundswell of people in any community. We had a, and John actually was involved in the little town of Carlisle, I'm not sure if many of you are aware of Carlisle or where that is. We had over thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six people apply for that position, little town. And we were really pleased with the result of that. The town of Arlington, one of the largest towns in the state, had nineteen people. The town of Brookline, the largest town in the Commonwealth, had thirteen people that applied. There's a number of factors that enter into these that, you know. Determine how many people you're going to get to apply, but geography is a big part of it. You're in an area that is, is, is really going to require a lot of, you know, dedicated, real recruiting. As opposed to just, in, in, in order to do real recruiting, you need to know who's out there. And we've done that work out in that region, in, in South Hadley, doing it in Hamp, we'll be doing it in Hampden. Actually, they may be just a little bit ahead of you because they've just started the process. Southampton's almost done in terms of the recruiting process, but we've done other work out in that region. You know, and from, on both sides, both east and west of you and north of you, nothing south of you. But we're, we're ready to, to go in and make those phone calls and do that active recruitment.
Okay, thank you.
So just as a follow-up to that, if I may, so one, Arlington was Chaplalane's former.
Yes.
CEO, right?
Yes.
And Carl may remember, we sat with the folks from Carlisle at an event at Mass Municipal a couple of years ago. I believe they also, we modeled a, a piece of legislation in our town regarding. That members of, of employees of the town of Southwick cannot be members of the Select Board. And we modeled our bylaw after Carlisle, so.
I think that was Kava, I think it was Richie LaFawn down in Kava.
Carver or Carlisle? Well.
No, Kava.
Oh yeah.
All right, here we go. See what I go through, Julie.
By the way, we are big fans of the Suffolk program, it, it seems to do good work. But my, I guess my question is kind of a follow-on to that is, it, it seems to me that there's been a lot of turnover in these types of positions. Due to the, the very nature of the, the staff that's in those spots, so, you know, Carl's not unique in, in where he is in his career. And so how does that work as a search firm? And, and I, I'm not trying to be high versero, I just want to ask the question is, is. Four years from now or one day after the guarantee's up, are, are you back at town hall looking to take that person to the next place? And, and how does that, you know, how do you moderate that? Like your list is going to come from a, a limited pool.
So we don't contact people we've placed. If they contact us because of other situations, that's, you know, a different story. But what we do is we will talk to people and say, and, and a lot of it is, you know, we make these phone calls to people we know and say, who do you know? You know, that, that we may not know, so especially with department heads, we're doing a lot of that. But no, this question gets asked a lot, so we won't, you know, be, you know, poaching. You know, is the term, you know, someone we've placed, you know, we, we're very big on, you know, you know, not making that initial contact. To somebody of that nature. Sir?
That was kind of what I was going to ask, but, so one of the questions we have here is. Have you guys ever been in an experience where you haven't been able to produce a candidate?
We've.
Go ahead, John.
So typically, we, we can produce candidates, there's been only one or two situations where, you know, Belchertown. We produced three actually very good candidates, the situation with Belchertown, I, I, I did that search. Situation with Belchertown is, in Belchertown, they had a bylaw where the town moderator appointed a screening committee, not the select board. So it was a different, you know, person appointing this, the committee. When the applications came in, I strongly recommended that they should interview, you know. You know, especially if there's an internal candidate who has qualifications, we believe they should be at least interviewed, they refused. So what happened was with Belchertown, there was a difference of understanding between the screening committee and the select board. The select board made their decision afterwards, you know, in appointing, but it wasn't because of something, you know, that was occurring, you know, with the firm. I, I met with, you know, that person, I had conversations with them because he was the Public Works Director. So, and he told me he'd be interested, I, and I worked with him on how to do that. And, but it was the screening committee who, you know, said, no, we don't wish to interview. The select board in the end came around and said, you know, we produced three very good candidates, I think. You know, there was, you know, the three very good candidates. And the select board said, you know, we, we have an internal candidate that should really be considered. And they made that decision, which was their prerogative to do.
Yeah, I was curious because I remember when I was reading at the, one of the gentleman from the select board said he couldn't vote for any of the three that you guys presented.
And let me clarify here, we don't present the candidates, your screening committee will, we'll work with the screening committee. You know, to make that decision going through. You know, our responsibility is to recruit and then work with the screening committee, you know, to have the discussions with them, you know, on the candidates. But in the end, your screening committee will actually be making the decision as to who to forward to you for final interview. So in that case, you know, you know, whether we agreed or not, the, you know, screening committee, screening committee made their decision. And then when it came in the end, I worked with the board too, you know, to finalize that situation in the end, because that was their decision.
Yeah. If, if I may, I, I think that, you know, and it's interesting that you're going to be talking about your panel a little later. We always, our, our recommendation is always that the screening committee, first off, that the screening committee. Understand what its role is, and the role is to reflect, we think, to reflect what the Select Board is looking for. We've actually had another community that, that we worked on, which the, similar to. Situation we're talking about in, in that other community. Where they have a process that when there's a vacancy in the position, their bylaw indicates who's going to be on the screening committee. Or who's going to appoint that screening committee. And in, in this particular community that I'm thinking of, we had a, a screening committee set up. And we brought candidates to that group and they, they indicated that. They wanted to do something different than what the Select Board wanted to do, because they felt that that was their job to make that decision. And they didn't really care what the Select Board was looking for, needless to say, that did not end well. They made, they made their decision, the Select Board in this case made, worked off of the candidates that were put before them. And, you know, it, it, it did not, it did not go well as a result of that, because it, it just wasn't a good mix. So we always, we have a draft committee charge that we will provide you. That says, okay, this is the role of the screening committee, is to take what the Select Board has endorsed as a position statement. What the prior, what the priorities, issues and ideal candidate looks like. And, and evaluate candidates based on that criteria. But we think that's important that that happened, you know, that the screening committee does that top part of the process. It doesn't get in there ahead of the process and determine what they want as opposed to the Select Board. So any of the issues that we've always encountered, we've, we've done, as I say, we've done over a hundred of these now. In, in the few cases where there's been sort of a bump in the road, that's generally where that bump happens.
So if we can, since we're talking about screening committee, can we jump to that question? A question on that?
By all means.
Okay, so when you have eight or ten resumes that you receive for this position. All eight or ten are given to the screening committee?
Yes.
With or without any filtering, let's say, from you?
Sure, good question, so what we do is we use a tiering system. So when we present the resumes and they see everything, so we don't, you know, withhold anything. We tend to use tier one, two and three, you know, or tier A, B, C. Sometimes it might be four tiers depending on the situation, so we'll tier them. And so T R A is going to be, you know, the candidates we think meet all the, you know, or meet most of the conditions. You know, their T R B, you know, might be candidates that have, you know, some background. Maybe it's a department head in, you know, someplace else, you know, that, it doesn't mean T R B is, you know, any, you know, is, is in a different situation. We're just trying to put them in some sort of tiering. And then the final tier are, you know, folks that, you know, might not have any true background in municipal government. But they may be bringing things to the table, so when we meet with a steering committee, we usually say, okay, let's start with tier, you know, three. You know, tier C candidates, do you think there's anybody within there you want to talk about? You know, and, you know, every once in a while, yes, we'd like to talk about this person, we'll have the discussion, we'll bring some background to that. But usually there's not much discussion at the tier three candidates, so then we start working with tier one candidates, we'll go through each candidate. So our role is to present information, you know, to the screening committee, to you, you know, in the end. As to what the background information is, in this day and age with Google and, you know, social media. You know, all of us have, you know, situations in which they need to be explained.
And then, if I may, so when you present those resumes and you, you've done some tier assignment to them. Have you at that point done any assessment on the people? Have you talked to them at all at that point, or are they just paper still?
No, we.
You may know, you know, some of you may know who they are, but.
So we will, the people we consider serious candidates, you know, within the pool, we'll be contacting. You know, if there are people in a pool we may not know, we think have some good background, we will contact. So we as a team will be working with some of these folks and having these discussions. You know, we'll, I'll make sure, let's say someone's living in another part of the state and they're applying for here. I want to make sure they're serious about, you know, you know, the, the, the capacity to, you know, to be here, you know, when needed. So we'll have those discussions, yes, so we.
We'll know if there are going to be a relocation.
Yep, so we'll have those discussions, we'll have those prior to going to the screening committee. So that when we're going into the screening committee, we'll be able to have some backgrounds as well on uh many of these candidates.
Okay.
So we're not just waiting to the end, you know, to contact the candidate, we're usually having those discussions um, uh, in between as well. And a lot of times candidates are calling us. You know, we're having discussions because they're, you know, they may be calling us to say, what about Southwick? You know, um, you know, is this a good fit? You know, do you think this is something I should be looking at? We'll get those calls to them. Um, so people will be running through us, you know, uh, the background, how do you feel? You know, what have, because they want to know, you know, what are we hearing, you know, going through our uh initial stage? Bernie, you wanted to add something there?
No, I I I think that covers it. I mean, I I just think it's important to know that we, we spend the time upfront, either e- either we know the candidates uh, and we we talk to them a little bit about what the position is, or we um uh, if we don't know them, if there's someone that comes out of the blue, then we will, we do spend the time talking to them. But we spend time, you know, what's the great part about the screening committee is we can have those conversations uh, in a, in a, in a setting in which we can be very honest about what the strengths and weaknesses are. And I see you, I see you've got your next interview group coming in to the Zoom meeting here, so.
That's okay, it's a deliberative process, so I guess we're gonna
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're gonna spend the requisite amount of time that we need to. So if we see, for instance, if we see a candidate from out of state, you know, we make the contact to see whether there's a fit. You know, um, you know, within the, why are you looking to come to Massachusetts after being ten years someplace else? We'll make that contact, we'll have that discussion. And and when you provide that information, I think this was on your list too, but and and we had a little discussion sidebar about this earlier is when you present uh resumes to the screening committee at First Bush, are they named, is it the person's name and everything else on that resume, or is it kind of concealed at that point?
No, we present, you get, the screening committee will receive the full resume.
Yeah, we, I I will say, we have in one community, we were asked to do a blind uh screening. Uh, you know, there there is a, there is a uh uh practice in particularly private sector. Uh, where to to uh eliminate any risk that people may be ruled out because of gender or uh ethnicity, uh race, uh, you know, you take off everything that's identifying. Uh, it doesn't work that well, because you need to put the community down on the resume. Uh, so it's a pretty easy Google search to figure it out.
Right.
I get it. It's it just, and and the reason I brought it up and the analogy that I used was, we actually had gone through a uh fire chief search here some years ago, and I wish that the as a member of the search panel, I'd wish that the resumes were blind, I would have made the absolute same decision that I made. And it was probably, it was a great hire. And it ended up being that, you know, uh, and the candidate actually was the chief's uh brother um that we ended up hiring. And I wish we could have gone through the process as candidate A, B, C, because as a search committee sending candidates up to the select board at the time, it would have that much more credibility, if you will. So that that was the basis.
We certainly would work with, you know, uh, the community as to, you know, the process.
No, but I, you know, your point's valid, like if you say you're the town manager of Arlington. Candidate B, right?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jason, can I?
No, we'll follow.
Um, I, if I could, um, community survey, um, or forum. Can you describe what is the information that you expect to glean from the community members who may or may not be as involved?
Sure, so some of that is characteristics. Well, maybe Sharon, you know, uh, you want to jump in on this, she does, she does a lot of this. Um, but you know, certainly the characteristics, you know, people are seeking, what are some of the opportunities? Some of the, you know, the challenges in a community, you know, type thing, so Sharon?
And definitely what type of person, what type, you know, do they want someone who's out there at all the events? And we will work with the board on what questions you might be more comfortable with on having on a survey. But we want to hear, what is, what do residents think the issues are in the community? What do they think of the big projects going on? It might differ, because it's, what's important to each resident could be different for, when you go from neighborhood to neighborhood, from whatever board they may or may not serve on. Um, so we want to hear about those issues, sometimes something different will come out. Um, also then we want to hear what type of skills and experience, they usually get the same type. But every now and then, something else comes out that's unique to the community. Because if, as Julie has mentioned, every community is unique, it has its own issues and concerns. So we, we want the community to be engaged and feel a part of the process. And they are a part of the process, because we go through those surveys and read every single response.
So how do you reach out to them? How do they become aware that you have questions?
Mm-hmm, um, we put that survey online, it can be on, it will be a link that's on your website, that can be on the library's website, that can go on your social media pages, um, to make sure it gets out there. You know, you can also put out notifications on local cable access to let them know to go to the various websites.
They can send an email blast.
Yep, and what kind of response do you normally see from that community outreach?
We get a much better response, as I think has been mentioned, to the online survey than we do to the community forums where someone has to go in person, or even if they go attend via Zoom. The online survey, because they can do it on their own time, it's usually up for, you know, at least two weeks, sometimes three weeks, whatever the community prefers. Um, we get a much better response to that. We've had as many as oh, almost four hundred people respond. And then we've had some communities where it's a smaller amount, it might be, you know, seventy-five people. But that far exceeds what we get at community forums.
That depends a little on the size of the community too, because like four hundred in Southwick would be awesome.
Right.
Forty would be not so much very good, right? So
But it's not always, we had a very small community where we had really good turnouts too. So sometimes engagement can differ a little.
Well, we we just completed the, um, we just finished our master plan, it's with the planning board now, that they had over a thousand responses to our survey. Which was
Which was unusual.
Yeah.
Phenomenal.
What, even Westfield had, what they had nine, I don't know, they had less than that, but uh
Yeah, much
Do a much shorter survey, ours was a really, really long detailed survey.
Congratulations.
They did a great job.
You know, for that piece, yeah.
Beating the bush to get people to come out to do it.
We just did one, you know, about a month, a couple of months ago, um, in the town I was working in, and we had, it was what, fifteen thousand people, and they got two hundred and fifty responses, I think, you know, on that one, so.
Pretty good.
So that's not bad, so it it all, you know, it it depends, you know, what's the output of the citizens of a community? You know, will they react to seeing that type of information?
So is that in your week two and three that that survey would be?
If we, if we were, um, you know, if you engage with us, we would, we'd get that survey out almost immediately and it would probably be during weeks two and three, something like that, but we have, uh, you know, we have the uh web uh postings and uh email blasts that we can, we've already got prepared, that we would be able to provide to you that you could then utilize to send, drive people to that website, that that link.
All right. Other questions for you guys? I got um, two more questions, if I may. Where, um, you look at our salary and compensation package and you compare that to whom, to what, how broadly across the state, Justice County, what's your scope?
We tend to, we tend to keep it more local, you know, um, because again, it depends where you are, you know, uh, you know, trying to compare a one twenty-eight belt to four ninety-five belt to, you know, the Springfield belt's going to be different. So we will look at that information based on locality. Um, and because again, you know, you're not, you're not competing with, we use Arlington going back, you're not competing with Arlington. You know, um, you're looking at this area, so we try to keep it, you know, focused uh within the area that um you're operating within. And sometimes that's difficult for us if we're in a community, you know, that's on a border, you know, um, and Bernie and I had a conversation today, but I talked about community, what one step, you know, one foot in one region and another foot in the other region, you know, um, and so sometimes you get those in the middle, but I think out here, we can certainly, you know, um, uh, put together some information to show you. Um, you know, uh, have that discussion early on, we'll have that discussion early on with each of you. You know, and the board as to what we think, you know, um, um, the region is.
Okay.
And I don't think we have to put on our salesperson hat either here, but if, you know, you look at a house in Arlington and then come take a look at a house in Southwick, this, you know, we we were successful a few years ago recruiting a guy out of Watertown, for God's sakes, but um you know, this area is appealing for someone who's who's looking to to set up roots and grow.
Yeah.
It is, it is appealing, but and and that was going to be a point I I was going to bring up, that that's certainly something that uh, needs to be uh sort of presented out there as a, as a selling point. Uh, but the other, the reality of it though is that uh the salaries tend to be higher, um, east and the eastern part of the state. And for the, for that, because of the housing prices, et cetera. But when people are making decisions like that of where to go, they also take into consideration what impact it's going to have on their pension. If, you know, at some point down the road. Uh, and so th- there's a number of different factors that weigh into it. It's like why we don't necessarily get a lot of people that come from out of state into Massachusetts, because the pension system here is structured in such a way that it's a great deal if you're in there for a long period of time. But to just drop in with ten, fifteen years, twenty, even twenty years uh to go, um, you know, you're not building up social security credits and um uh you you don't, you're um um having to pay eleven percent uh towards your, your pension, which cuts into the salary. So it's good for people here in Massachusetts, but from outside, it doesn't make a lot of sense i- in many cases. So, you know, those are all factors that we kind of have to work through when we're doing these recruitments.
And also, we've done enough work out here to understand, you know, the issue of people want to live here, you know, that that difference, we we get that concept.
We definitely want you to promote.
Absolutely, and we do, so we've done, we we've done that, you know, with with other communities, you know, and so, you know, we've had enough experience, you know. Uh, so we don't just work inside the belt of four ninety-five, we've been out here, you know, uh, several times, so we get that concept. And so, you know, our job is to, you know, be a recruiter, you know, to be the sales pitch, I call ourselves ombudsman, you know, um, so it's for us to help sell, you know, um, uh, the discussion, you know, sell what this area brings, you know, uh, to each of the candidates. Uh, so I think we do a nice job of that, you know, um, you know, when we do that.
Last question for me, did any of you all do any homework on Southwick to and make you want to come here and do this recruitment?
So I certainly, I I, you know, okay.
Well, I know it came in the dark.
Yeah, came in the dark, but anyways, prior to, yeah, you know, I've got my numbers here, you know, I understand, you know, um, you know, uh, where your budget is, uh, you know, you got an interesting regional school system here, you know, uh, where, you know, your numbers are, you know, you know, outweigh the other two communities, you know, within the area. But, you know, having been a former assistant superintendent schools, I I get that concept, I looked at your police, fire, public works, you know, and pieces on that. So yes, I I've gone through, um, you know, I I I checked the uh DLS website, uh, DOR website, you know, on on the background. I've gone through your website, you know, to understand it and um, you get a, you know, you get a sense, you know, I wrote down some numbers here, you know, uh, you know, firefighters, police officers, DPW, I got a sense of how it's structured, you know, and we do a lot of this work, so I can get a pretty good grasp of that, but we're gonna come in and do a deep dive. Uh, but yes, I did do, you know, uh, uh, some background, you know, I've got the, you know, the statistic pieces, you know, um, and, you know, you got a great school complex here, you know, I, you know, it's great with the library, you know, right in front and you know, uh, the three schools, and it looks like a lot of fields, you know, so yeah, you got some nice pieces with police and fire right next to each other. So yeah, did do, you know, a little bit of background, I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in on that, but
You have a great, you have a great golf course, the ranch is a great golf course. I could speak to that.
I've been looking at some of your documents online, the town reports and planning documents, um, which is where I put a lot of my focus early on, uh, before I have conversations with people if we were to get the the job.
But I definitely want to get into the jog area, into Connecticut.
You probably did.
Yeah, 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 exactly, you know, it's like, you know, it's so interesting how you've got, you know, that
Only seconds away from it.
And I believe we're the only Southwick in the country.
No.
There's another Southwick
Yes, there is.
In the country.
Yes, there is.
Buddy, who invited you to this meeting? Because everyone's got an Arlington and a Carlisle and a Carver.
Yeah.
I thought Southwick was in England, there's
Yes, there is a Southwick in England.
Yes.
That I know, we've met
I grew up in Dallingham, so there's only one other Dallingham in
So there you go.
Washington.
But uh, you know, there's a lot of things going for this town that we, you know, I I jest a little bit, but you know, there's a lot going for this town that makes it attractive. And I also, you know, uh, Living Fruit is um, that gentleman on the phone that's retiring after thirty-five years. There probably, you can probably count on a couple of hands how many town administrators served that tenure in a singular job. Um, and and he's here every day early in the morning, so he must at least like coming here some of the time.
So just as a note, he is right now the longest-serving administrator manager in this state. As recently, because the person who was ahead of him just retired, uh, Dennis Frain just retired a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but Kyle is now the longest-serving in a state.
But it's, it says some, I mean, it says something to the town that, you know, we're looking for, you know, obviously, we don't expect the next person, it'd be great, but I don't expect another person to serve thirty-five years, a lot has changed in that period of time. But it says a lot when someone's willing to to work at a singular place
Absolutely.
Through the transformations and the growth and the changes of the people on the board um over the course of time. Um, and to be a steady hand, so I mean, it says a lot going for this process, just as, you know, as a search firm coming to look to to potentially place a candidate here, I think it speaks volumes.
Good opportunity, you've got a great, you know, great community, so we're not, we're not being challenged with the, you know, what necessarily the negative, you know, connotations of a community like we do in some places. I think you've got some real positive aspects going, um, uh, and um, so we'll work with that, we'll use that, you know, as the basis of, you know, moving forward with our pitch.
Really cool, but do you see a trend in tenure occurring, staying in it for five years?
It's
Waiting here, waiting here for ten minutes, and you steal my longevity question, so.
You know, it's, it's, that's been, that's discussed all the time amongst managers as to what it is. It seems as if we, you know, early on, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, three to five years might have been what we would have said was, you know, uh, the term, then we went through a period of people were staying, but with the retirements of what occurred. And then, uh, in some places, the um, the political uncertainty within the local communities, you know, has generated. So in the last, we track this, in the last uh five years, almost forty percent of the jobs, you know, have turned over. You know, um, in in the last, uh, I think, four years, actually.
Actually, it's the opposite, John, it's it's sixty, fifty percent.
Sixty percent.
Yeah.
Big number.
Yeah, so I I I said that wrong, so we track that, we have, we have, you know, what's going on. This year, it actually slowed down, we've done, there's been a few um, uh, turnover, yeah, there's been less turnover for the first time. You know, in five years this year, but um, we're seeing it depends where it is and what the situation is. Um, so I think, you know, uh, five to eight is a good number, which is as good as it gets, you know, from, you know, in in the long term.
It's hard, and it's hard to say what ten, what tenure is going to be like, because, because so many communities have turned over, we just don't know how long people are going to stay, uh, because
Slowing down or
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's picked up a little bit in the last month. Uh, there's been, there's been, there's been a a bit of turnover in the last month, but it was quiet for about four or five months prior to that. So
Okay.
Didn't Palmer just announce too, a week or so ago?
Yeah, he he left, you know, uh, he's been there four years.
Four years.
Four years.
You know, and uh, he just left. Are there no questions, sir?
None.
Now?
Nothing.
Okay, anyone from the audience have a question since we're at it?
Yeah, I got a question, what, you know, you said people go on, but their age, is it at age, and then can do that, how long people stay?
So for uh, up, up until recently, Kyle's one of the newer retirements, but there's a whole group of us who retired four or five years ago, that all kind of started, you know, back in uh the early eighties, and it all just came that all kind of started, you know, back in, uh, the early eighties and it all just came together, uh, you know, the great tsunami, so, age has, you know, some piece to do, there was a, a large group in 17 to 19 that retired. That has kind of slowed down a little bit, um, but that, that works out as to, you know, when are the retirements coming? And a lot of us all started in the eighties when all these positions first were created, you know, uh, back then. I was the first town administrator in Harvard, you know, uh, back when they created it in 88. Um, so yeah, that's, that, that's some of it. Although today now it's more the political stress, you know, of what can happen, you know, in some of these communities, uh, some people will say, I'm not sure if I want to do this, you know, going forward, we've seen some of that today. Inga?
Yeah, a couple of questions for you, John. When you send the assessment of the professionals to the screening committee, do you also highlight what their motivation is, what their salary expectations are and why they're motivated to look at Southwick?
So when we send it to the screening committee, we, we don't, we, we don't give an assessment as we send it to the screening committee. When we meet, we go over each, um, we'll, 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 uh, we'll address, you know, with the screening committee, why someone may be, may be coming. Uh, salary expectation is a different discussion, you know, uh, but we post, you, you post a salary, you know, upfront. Um, and so we don't necessarily get into that discussion, you know, uh, with screening committee, you know, at that level.
So prior to sending them to the screening committee, you said that you do speak to the professionals. Do you find out from them what their salary expectations are, because even though you might put the range down, people can still say that they want above the minimum.
We, 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 we do talk to them about salaries, it, it, it was sort of, generally, this is a topic that comes up in, in the conversations very, it just organically comes up.
Yeah.
Now, they'll say, you know, I'm, I, will they, will the town go more? Uh, how, how real are they with that number? We generally try to peg a number. Uh, if you look at most of our postings, it's a plus or minus that we, number that we put in there, that's sort of the mid-range point. Uh, and so when, when we have conversations with people, uh, you know, that, that will come up, they'll say, look, you've posted this at, 150 plus or minus, uh, is, you know, will they go to 160, 165? And we'll have a sense from, from the board as to how flexible they are, uh, you know, in many cases, if they're really outstanding, we'll say, look at, uh, they might go a little bit higher, uh, you know, you have to put it in and you have to make the case as to why you, you'd be the right candidate to do it. Uh, but we have conversations about that and then we would communicate that to the screening committee, because oftentimes that's one of the questions that the screening committee will ask us. They'll say, well, you know, they're coming from, uh, another town and they must be making more there. And, you know, it's all public record, you can't ask people, um, what they're making, but in this, in this state, uh, but in municipal government, we know what people are making because it's all public record. Uh, so we can have conversations with the screening committee early on in the process to say, look, yeah, they're looking, they're, they're, they're looking to make more because, this is what they're making in a particular community, or conversely, they, you know, they, they're, they're willing to, uh, drop down because the political environment in which they're in, uh, is, is, is very challenging and they're looking for quality of life.
Lot of reasons, so we try, we try to work through, you know, what's the personal motivation of, you know, when we get to that point of, you know, uh, trying to break it down to, you know, good candidates.
Last question, um, in regards to the references, uh, Bernie had mentioned that you spent at least three to four hours doing references on each one of these professionals. Are, is that a template that you utilize?
No.
Is it a little creepy to what you normally will ask of those references and kind of be customized?
No, because each person is a little bit different sometimes, so we're trying to delve in, so we're gonna, we're gonna hit, you know, the major topics of, you know, how do they work with people, you know, what an employee, you know, that back and forth. And then depending on the candidate, the location, it may, it may move off, so it's not a template. Um, but it is, um, you know, uh, you know, we, we know, you know, the questions we're going to ask, you know, basically to get to a point, you know, you know, what were they successful at, you know, um, what areas, you know, um, you know, uh, do they certainly need to improve upon? We'll get into, you know, that type of question, but there's no template to it, uh, but again.
So the board can customize it and give you some additional questions to ask, that would be important to them to know.
Well, well, but if I, if I, if I, if I could, in terms of the board asking of things, we certainly can, if the board is interested in particular topics related to the candidates, that they are presented to them, that we can dig in and get additional information that might relate.
We can make sure we're covering that as part of what we're doing.
But the, the reference work that we do is before the names even get to the board. That's, I think John tried to make that point, that, uh, we do that, that all the finalists, before they get to the board. And then we can dig in afterwards, after the board sees it, but what we really try to do is, we don't use a template, we have, s- sort of set questions if you, that you would anticipate. But again, these are just, these are discussions and dialogues with the references that are free flowing, so that we can really get the information. Again, I'm going to go back to Sharon's background on this, as a journalist, she's interviewing people about people. There isn't a set number of questions, this is, tell us about this person and the, the projects they've worked on. What was, been their greatest success? Where do you think that they could make some improvements? It, they're very free flowing discussions to get the most information out of the, the individuals as opposed to, uh, a template. And I've, as a former employer, I have filled out those template forms and there isn't a lot you can put in those other than, uh, you know, just brief, uh, responses. We really want to open the door to understand who these people are.
Right, follow-up questions depend upon the responses given, you know, we may hear something that, then tells us we need to ask questions in this other direction and, move on, and then also sometimes too, we may need to call other people to get even more detail on some answers we got from certain references. So it, it has to be open, it has to be fluid to get the information that we want and that we want for the board to have.
Thank you. Joseph?
How are you doing?
Fantastic, how are you?
Pretty good, I'm sure you guys know what you're doing, that's why you're here today. So the, how many guys, how many folks have you probably put in this position in the last few years?
So in the, so we've done, we've done a hundred, you know, over a hundred. Um, I've been with the firm just, you know, I'll just speak to myself, so I've been with the firm five years, I've been involved in 30 searches, you know, uh, in that five-year period. Um, so, you know, so.
You guys have placed a lot of people.
Yeah.
Where do you see, are they staying? Can you, can you just, you know, was there a twenty that didn't work out of a hundred or the eighty?
It is whatever reason. Sure, there, there's a couple that didn't work out, you know, and, you know, so.
There should be.
That, yeah, exactly, you can't, you know, you know, but for the most part, um, our, you know, uh, placements, and again, it's the decision being made by the town. You know, sometimes they're making a decision and we say, I'm not sure I would go on that route, but it's there.
It's not your job.
That's not my job, that's, that's there to go, but for the most part, you know, we're trying to make sure that there's a good, you know, uh, uh, connection.
Sure.
You know, uh, between both parties and that both parties understand where this is going from the beginning. It's not always worked out.
No, that's, it's about the math.
Yeah.
And then the last one, um, we're fortunate, I mean, Carl, 35 years, I mean, you know, he invented all this. Um, how do you, where do you see people staying? Is it five years? Is it, I mean, we're never getting a Carl. Right, it's four good years, one year, and then.
I, I, I think, I always, I always talk to boards and say, if you can get five years, that's gonna, that's gonna, that, well, that's gonna put you in a position where someone can make an impact.
Right.
You know, two or three years, that person's gonna come in and not necessarily make a positive impact for the future. But with five years, that person can make an impact.
Right.
So I always talk to boards about just trying to focus in those five years.
Right.
And, and make sure you've got a path during those five years, uh, to work. If beyond, you know, if you can go beyond that, that's great. You know, uh, but we're seeing, we're seeing a little bit over five years, you know, uh, with many positions these days.
Okay.
Go shoot for eight.
Yes. We shoot with 35?
That, that's, that, that's, that's, that's gonna be an oddity in a few years. Yeah, I think so, and it's, it's holding true in the private sector too, right?
Yeah.
But, uh, Western Mass tends to drive that, I mean, the average is probably way higher out here than it is when you get into, you know, the eastern part of the state, um.
But a lot, a lot of factors around those things.
But anyway, uh, I just wanted to put it out to anybody that was on Zoom, if they had a question and wanted to raise their hand before we move on. And thank you for your time, I don't feel like we're neglecting anybody on Zoom.
You have a hand up.
I think that's Andrew's hand and I think it's them, is it the mouse in the wrong place? So, yeah, it wasn't really a hand.
Oh.
Um,
Sure, it looked like one.
I know it did too, I checked three times, but, uh, so, all right, okay, well, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate you coming out this way.
Well, we thank you for the opportunity and, uh, we wish you the best of luck, so whichever way this goes, but you know, nice meeting you all, thank you very much. Okay, and on behalf of the team, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye Carl, nice seeing you.
Bye. Thanks, everyone, thank you.
Hey, hey, and we're running our normal prompt self here at the select board tonight, our seven o'clock appointment.
Thank you.
And Bob's a good guy, he'll get on next, you know.
Yeah, I hope we can't close it. Hey, open meeting law folks frown on that a lot. All right, so next we have our seven o'clock interview with Municipal Resources Inc. and they're on Zoom. Yes, no?
Yeah.
Yep, she's free. Well, there's one.
Yep, uh, Bud Stacinski here and Bob will be on in a minute.
Okay.
Hi Buzz.
Hi.
How are you Buzz?
I'm, I'm well and yourself.
Good.
Yep, Bob should be, there he is, Robert.
The floor is yours, gentlemen. Let's, uh, let's, before we start, let me just, we'll do a quick round of introductions. I'm Doug Mogul on the chair of the select board, Jason Perron, vice chairperson, Diane Gale, you guys say hello, so the thing switches to you, clerk. Nadine Signoni is the assistant CAO and Carl Steinhardt, who everybody seems to know very well, because he is now the longest-serving CAO in the Commonwealth, is on Zoom with us tonight.
Yeah. Oh, Buzz, you want me to start? Yeah, why don't you start, Bob and I'll fill in around the edges there. Can you hear me Doug?
Absolutely, loud and clear.
Okay, thank, well, first and foremost, congratulations Kyle.
Thank you Bob.
You, you sure don't want to come back as an interim?
I haven't left yet, okay, I need a vacation, you and Buzz.
I can imagine, I, I can imagine.
Yeah, can't deny a man his vacation.
Uh, Doug and, uh, Jason and Diane, thank you so much, uh, and Nadine, thank you for coordinating all of this stuff. Um, we're happy to be here and, uh, let's, uh, I'll just start and Buzz can jump in. Uh, you've got our materials, uh, what we sent in and, uh, you know, other jobs we've done, uh, across New England, uh, Buzz and I mostly responsible for the Massachusetts recruitments. Uh, but we've also done, in effect, we have an active one now in Connecticut, uh, that being Winchester, Winstead. Uh, actually an interesting community, about 10,000 people, kind of close to you folks.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, we're just starting that. And, um, you know, we, we, we like to be pretty selective. We don't, we don't try to go into every community that has an opening. Um, we, we found that in the past, when we've done that, we found ourselves playing musical chairs with candidates. And that was just uncomfortable to us, so we stay focused. I know there are a number of communities that are opening right now and we are, we're, we're not applying, except for one. Um, and that's in the eastern part of, of Massachusetts. And, you know, we, we like to stay focused on what we do well and what we believe we do well is communities like yours. 10,000 plus or minus populations, sort of some good rural characteristic. Some have semi-developed downtown areas, uh, with a major route going through it. Um, and you can see from the number of, of those type of communities, and I'll just name a couple, we just finished up Blackstone, 10,000 folks right on the Massachusetts Rhode Island line, actually. Um, we've done Middleton, 10,000 people, Georgetown, 10,000 folks, Lakeville, uh, 10,000 plus. Uh, similar in terms of, and this is interesting to us, the fact that you have the type of recreational, uh, opportunities with the lakes that you have. Um, and that is very, that, that's, that's something we enjoy doing, because frankly, you're an easy sell for us to make the potential candidates. Uh, Winchester in Connecticut, 30 miles from you, more or less, uh, has a similar, uh, sort of makeup, uh, and they're, they're pretty famous for Highland lakes. And, uh, you've got the Congamon, uh, group of lakes that attract a number of people and make the community very attractive, so, um, uh, Lakeville speaks for itself, Lakeview, Massachusetts has a number of lakes in it. Uh, and we, we did that job a couple of years ago, and of course, Carver, Massachusetts, not only lakes, but the cranberry capital, Little World, uh, or used to be anyway, until Wisconsin took over. Uh, so that, that, my point is, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's the type of community, yours is the type of community we really enjoy doing. And frankly, in, in our, uh, queue, if you will, uh, which is something that should be appealing to you, you will be a primary focus, we don't have eight other searches going on, uh, we could, but we don't. And as I said, we're finishing up, by the way, tomorrow night. Um, well, we're not finishing up, we've got about two weeks left in Northborough, Massachusetts, bigger community along 495, some different issues, different problems, than what you guys are dealing with. Uh, but we're going to be done that in two weeks, we're doing semifinal interviews tomorrow night and Wednesday night, and then next week, the, uh, select board's gonna, interview the finalists, and that's, that's the community we're finishing up on. As I mentioned early on, we just did take on Winchester, uh, Winstead in Connecticut. Uh, but that is it, in, in terms of our focus, and so my point is to you, uh, why we thought this was interesting, because of all of the attributes I, I just mentioned that you have, that we like in terms of those type of communities. Right population size, right mix, rural, kind of a rural, uh, aspect to you and that, and I'm sure, and you can tell us that, but I'm sure, uh, many in your, your community want to maintain, and we hear that a lot, in some of the communities that I just mentioned, and, uh, that's what really intrigued us, uh, by this application. And we, we talked about it, Buzz and I talked about it with Alan, uh, who's the president of the company, who, uh, unfortunately, he expressed his regret, but he is traveling, and, uh, wanted to participate, but we, we said to Alan, you know, that's a target community for us, we should look at it. And, um, and that's, so you, you've seen our application, you've seen the work we've done, uh, we can talk to you about specifics. Um, we've got a pretty good handle on how to sell a community of your size to, to potential applicants. And of course, you've got Kyle there, and I'm sure people are gonna pick his brain about, uh, what the situation is and, um, you know, the, the other thing that, that Buzz and I always look at is the A or the stability in a community. And I'm not going to say how long Kyle's been there, but that's pretty stable. Um, and that's, that's important, because as you know, and you probably know this better than we do, across the Commonwealth, these positions are getting more and more difficult. And there's movements going on, some, some movements are not the desire of the TA or the TM. Uh, and others, there's been political changes in the appointing authorities and there's just a lot of things going on. And, um, your community is one that we can say, uh, I think pretty confidently, that anybody who's in the profession is gonna look at and say, they've got some stability there. Um, you know, Kyle was there a long time and that's something I'm looking at. I don't want to walk into a firestorm, and I'm talking about the candidates now, and have to put out fires. Uh, I'll do the work and I'll work for the select board, but I like stability, that's what I'm looking for. And Southwick has that, so that's another one of those checkmarks, that's a part for you guys, as we, if we get engaged by you, that we will, uh, trumpet to any potential candidate, so. Um, Buzz, did I say too much? No, no, in, uh, no, in fact, um, we, we should tell you that, uh, over the summer, we finished up Marlboro, Connecticut. And, uh, we had, uh, a pretty impressive list, I think we had probably more than 30, uh, resumes that we received. And, uh, we had some really good candidates in that, uh, group that, um, really aren't, you know, aren't too far from, uh, where you folks are, so we have, uh, we have some folks from Marlboro that, um,
That um uh we're interested in that community, and I think they're probably right about where your sweet spot is. Uh we finished up Berry, Massachusetts, uh about half your size, but we finished up Berry and had a nice. Group of candidates for that as well. So um there, you know, there are folks uh who are still interested in being town administrators. And um we've had some, you know, good luck uh filling those vacancies and finding the right fit. You know, I think that's really what we, we pride ourselves on is to bring you folks a group of candidates. That we think has the fit, and of course, it's your ultimate decision for the, 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 the fit that, that suits. Uh the three members of the select board. But um as Bob said, we've had uh finished up some searches, and now we're ready to turn our attention uh to you folks. In the, you know, in the months ahead.
I think Doug, the other thing that uh attracted us as, as we looked at things, first of all, we did, we did a little bit of research and we, we know some of the challenges. Uh that you have going forward, uh like most communities, but um. You know, what was intriguing to us and part of our sales job, if you will, to candidate, to some of the challenges that. Any municipal manager, and you saw Buzz and I, our whole careers were as municipal managers, get excited about. Um, you know, you, you've got the whole master plan. Uh I, I don't know if you got your funding, but uh. You know, twenty forty-five plan is, is pretty interesting with the acronym that you established uh on a heading of that. Um, you know, you've had your, your facilities assessment, and I just read through it quickly. You know, you've got a lot of cost items. That you're gonna have to deal with at some point going forward uh with your facilities, and that's, that's all good. At least you've got the planning document. Uh for that, uh as, as you know, it's how you're gonna pay for it uh going forward, but at least you've got that document and you've recognized that there are. Some issues with uh facilities going forward. Again, that's not unique. Uh most towns are, are, are dealing with that same issue. Um, I found it interesting, you're, you're engaging or trying to engage in discussions about creating a municipal light. Uh plant for, for the community. I don't know where that standing is now, but that's an interesting, innovative. Uh approach to, to try to do something for the community. Um, I did read uh your finance uh chair, uh talk about a potential uh fiscal cliff coming. Uh with the lack of some of the pandemic money and obviously the schools demanding what they need. Uh and everything you have to look at going forward uh in planning for the, for the community. And I also noticed just uh briefly, Buzz and I always like to see this, where your, your, your select board. Has decided to, and I'm sure you've done it for the years, create a series of goals and objectives. That's important to us, and it's important for candidates coming in, because they'll be able to read those before they even apply. And take a look at those and see where the direction is of the community. Uh and it's important for somebody in the field to kinda know what they're getting into as they walk into a community, if they're successful throughout the process. So I found those interesting. The last thing I'll say that's interesting to us is the jog. Well, you guys sit in Massachusetts, but you're literally in Connecticut, and I, I, I read the history of that jog and. Who created the lines and all that kinda stuff, and anybody who looks at a map will see it. It's that little jog into uh what, what was Connecticut. So. Uh those are things we, we think are very interesting uh to anybody who, the history of the community, obviously, but anybody who's interested. In those type of issues, um you're a win-win as a community, so.
Well, thank you. I mean, uh first of all, we have formed a municipal light plant. We've gone through that and uh we're in the process of. Uh working up the R F P for the Muni Fiber, and the master plan is complete and with the planning board for their acceptance and, and adoption. Um, and I, I just had one quick question. Is it Winchester, Connecticut or Winstead, Connecticut?
We're, we're confused too. Uh Winchester is the more rural part of the community. Winstead, it has a little, literally a downtown area.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's got a major root running right through it, so it makes it a little dicey.
Root it, yep. Root it. That's the shortcut to eighty-four for us. Or the scenic route, depending on how you look at it.
Yep, yep.
So, um, are you ready for some questions?
Sure.
Okay, so this is Diane. So if Southwick is a win-win, can you tell us about some losses that you've had? You must have had a few that didn't work out.
No question, no question. That's a good question. And um, you know, we were, we, as I mentioned in my, my brief intro. Um, it, it's, it's a tough field. It's a tough, tough profession right now. And uh some things work out, some don't. Uh our most recent, uh Buzz is, is on with me. He can. Chime in is Northborough. Uh we went through a full search with them. We brought them candidates. Um, they could not reach an agreement with the final candidate, and uh this is unique. I'm not saying would happen all the time. But we're doing it over for free. And we're, as I mentioned, we're pretty close to the second phase of this ending in a couple of weeks, and we've got some good candidates. Um, uh where else? Uh we placed somebody in Blackstone two years ago. And they had a, they had a falling out between the administrator and the elected board. Uh there was some changes in the board, and the administrator was not fired. They just had a mutual agreement to separate. And we just did their second iteration, and they've got a terrific candidate. I hope, I'm crossing my fingers, I hope that this individual is gonna work out very well. They seem very pleased. Um, but to your question, uh ye- yes, there are failures in this industry. Um, we don't count on that. Which is why if you read, uh if you read through our proposal, uh we feel very confident that we will get you. The, the people that will succeed, and if it doesn't, um we will do the job over again within a year. Uh for free.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Buzz, am I right?
Yes, and it, you know, basically what our agreement is, is if you sign a contract with an individual. And uh the, it, you know, for whatever reasons, it doesn't work out in a year, you know, we'll do it over. The situation in Northborough was a little different. The uh, the select board never signed a contract with the, with the uh, the chosen candidate. And um so that was a little, a little unique. Uh but honestly, our, I think our track records. Has been uh outstanding in terms of uh the applicants who go through the process to get, go through, you know, and, and get selected. Um, uh I can think of very few, except the, in the situation in, in Blackstone, and this individual. Came from a big city, had a, a certain expectations on, on what, you know, she wanted to do in the job. Uh didn't work out. She wasn't uh comfortable there and, and decided to leave on her own. So that was, that was a little unique. But um one of the things that, that you should know that we don't do is we don't poach from um. Uh, 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 community that we have done, we don't reach back to that community and say, oh, it's, it's time now to, you know. Uh to, to move and to perhaps apply to um Southwick. Uh if a, a community that we were, have worked on in the past, worked in in the past. Have been involved in uh having somebody appointed as town manager, town administrator. Uh, you know, they would have to come uh and apply on their own. We don't uh do what we call poaching from communities where we place people.
Thank you. That was part two of the question.
Now, I, I, let me just follow up. We do have people that, you know, as you know, you can only choose one, right? You, you know, you'll, you'll be. Uh depending on how you wanna handle this, you know, you'll be interviewing uh three or four people, maybe five. Uh but you can only choose one. So if we know there are good candidates out there from other searches. Uh who didn't get selected, well, of course, you know, we're gonna be in touch with them if we think they have the skills, the talents, the education. Uh of what you folks are looking for here. So, you know, we uh, we always say that, you know, you, you, you. Can only choose one, and so, you know, we know folks who are interested in the profession, have the skills and the talents. And um, well, so happy to answer any more questions you may have.
Uh, how many applicants do you normally receive for towns of our size?
Well, we'll uh, we'll get, uh, well, first of all, we advertise in the I C M A International City Management Newsletter. That goes around the world. And we, we uh advertise in the six New England states, and uh as you can imagine, somebody who wants to move to Massachusetts. Is going to be watching the uh M M A job postings, you know, every week. Uh and then they're gonna be looking at the uh I C M A newsletter uh on, on, on their website, you know, every day. So for instance, um I would think typically we'd get, this is a little different now than it was uh pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, we could count on about fifty. We'll get probably thirty. Uh and that's about the average we, we see, depending on the size of the town, um you know, between twenty-five and thirty-five applicants. And um from that group, the um, they'll probably be uh, uh, uh twelve to fifteen. That meet the basic requirements. One of the uh situations that we have, and any, any consulting firm would have, any search firm. Is that uh young people coming right out of school think they can do the job, and perhaps they can. Uh but uh, 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 we haven't talked to you folks, but one of the things, things we do in the engagement, of course, we get it. Is to get, you get the profile of the candidate. Uh typically, uh getting somebody right out of school, uh. Little unusual, you know, we, we would probably counsel them unless they're very, very uh, uh talented and sophisticated. Perhaps you wanna be an assistant someplace. So uh, uh, we'll get, you know, young people with M P As right out of, you know, Suffolk. Or UMass or Northeastern or whatever. Um and we'll get people who have, uh, you know, who're the manager of Dunkin' Donuts. And because this is a town administrator position, uh they think they can do the job. So I would say typically half. Of the group is, just doesn't meet the requirements that you have in your town charter and your job description. We went over that. You're, you're looking for six years of progressive experience. You're looking for a good, solid education, a M P A or, or M B A preferred. Uh and you know, we will go through the, the group of, let's say, thirty, and I'll, there'll probably be, you know, twelve to fifteen. That will meet the basic requirements uh to move forward to what we think is the next step in this process.
Do you present, so if you got thirty applicants, do you present them all to the screening committee, or do you present the ten or twelve?
All right, here's, just to go over our process. So let's say we start off with thirty. Uh, we'll review those, uh, we'll review those resumes to see, uh the cover letters and the resumes, see who is, who's. Who's appropriate, who's qualified for the job. Uh, now what I mean by appropriate, there would be people who apply. Um, who uh we know, and we know they have a, a record of some sort or another. Uh that we know that, that would not be appropriate for this commit, uh this, this town. Um, and uh, and so we will review those folks. We will narrow the group down to, let's say, uh, uh, twelve to fifteen, and then from our discussions with the select board members. And we will send that group of twelve to fifteen, three essays, uh three to five essay questions, and we ask them. To tell us about their experience. We don't ask them to solve your problem in Southwick. We ask them, what's their experience with economic development, for instance? Or what's their experience with the building a budget or a capital improvement plan? Or tell us about your experience with um, you know, conflict management or conflict resolution. Uh, you know, what's your onboarding plan? What's your ideal onboarding plan? We think that's kind of a neat question, because it gives you folks an idea of what their expectations are in their first, you know, six months, nine months, twelve months. So they can be on boarded in a way where your expectations and their expectations meet. Uh that we think that's a, a, a key situation is uh getting uh the new administrator on boarded. In a way that your expectations come together. Uh so. We have some people drop out at that stage. Some people say, no, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm not interested, and, and they will not do. They'll not do the essay. So there's always a couple of people who, you know, maybe get another job. Because, you know, a lot of folks are candidates these days, so some people may drop out for uh because they get another job. Other people don't wanna do the work. Sometimes these essay, they, we give them ten days for the essay questions, two weekends, but. You know, if it comes over the holidays, or if it comes during budget time when they're out straight. Um, so we, you know, we, we, we will review the essays that come in. And we'll talk to the folks on the phone uh to see if they're still interested. Are they in other searches? Do they know what the, the pay range is? Uh tell us about your, your resume. There seems to be a gap here for two years. What happened? Uh, or uh, you know, how come you were only, how come you've been bouncing around from town to town? Uh, so we will have uh phone interviews with the um, let's say with the twelve. And then with your screening committee, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll bring the ten or twelve to your screening committee. The cover letters, the essays, the, the, the uh resumes, and we'll have a long meeting with them going over. All that information. We get that, it's all confidential, of course. It's executive session, and that's what the candidates expect. Is that it will be confidential until they're a finalist. So we'll meet with the screening committee, present our uh candidates, we'll have. Quite a bit of information on them, background information, and then we will determine with the screening committee. Who they would like to bring forward for interviews. And then we'll assist them with.
Diane, we, we, we just did that uh last week with Northborough. Uh, we had originally broke it down, Buzz, to sixteen people that we thought we'd bring to them, to the screening committee. And four people dropped out before we even got to that stage. And so last week, we met with them for, I don't know, three hours or so, Buzz. And we, we brought them twelve candidates that we thought could do the job. Um, but we made no judgments on whether it's the right fit for the community. That's your job. Uh but we think these people can do the job from a technical perspective. Uh, that committee, and we don't, we don't favor one person over another. We just give them what we found out about those individuals. And what we know about those individuals. We let them make the determination as to who they wanna interview. Which we're going to do tomorrow night, and we have seven candidates they broke it down to, for the screening committee to interview. With the expectation, I think Buzz talked about it earlier, that they wanna bring three to four. Members for the select board the following week.
And we will work with the, you know, screening committee on the questions they can ask. A lot of times, screening committees have no idea. On the restrictions on questions, you know, uh, uh, that the attorney general uh has put forth on what you can and cannot ask in an interview. So we'll assist them with questions, with sample questions and, and uh, you know, provide guidance and that sort, sort of thing, uh, you know. In the office, we'll arrange the, arrange the interviews, the times, working with you folks on the location of the interviews, that sort of thing. Uh, we'll, you know, we provide that, uh, that kind of support. So it, it, from your perspective, your screening committee's perspective. And the candidate's perspective, we make it look seamless uh to them.
And are you present at all of the screening committee meetings?
Yes, we would be, we would be present, of course.
Well, it's obvious you guys have done a lot of research on Southwick, so, and what I thought, what I find interesting with you guys is you guys focus. A lot on small towns. Um, do you see a different kind of candidate looking for small towns? Are they looking, what are they really looking for?
Excellent question. Uh, yeah, ye- yes, there, there's a certain group out there who, who prefer the small town environment. Um, that doesn't mean they don't wanna work as hard, but they prefer that small town engagement. And we, we identify them pretty quickly, because we keep them on our list of people who might be interested in the types of communities, as I said earlier. Uh Jason, uh the types of communities we really like to focus on. Uh A with some rural characteristics, and, and that's appealing to some candidates who wanna. Who want to get away from the s- sort of inside the four ninety-five belt, if you will. Uh, heading to Boston, which is a very active, sometimes overactive communities. Some people don't want that. They, they want to manage something, have a, have the ability to make some changes in those, those smaller communities. I, I say smaller, ten thousand people's not that small, but um, but Jason, to your point, we, we just enjoy. You'll see on our list, we've done the Uptons, the Berlins, you know, those type of communities that, um. That again, you know, Upton, Berlin, still have that rural characteristic that people, people in the community want to make. And that's always a balance that's difficult, but there are some administrators who really enjoy that. Vis a vis, let's build a new downtown and let's uh, have Fortune five hundred companies move in here and that type of stuff. So it's a different perspective, but there are candidates that, that we have identified, obviously, that really enjoy. That aspect of local governance, which is the smaller community where you have. A better ability to make people's lives better and different. And that's. That, that's a special characteristic for, for an administrator. Kyle knows that.
And uh, uh, let me, let me just add, uh, we've done, I, what comes to mind is, is three. Three small communities uh, about your size. We just, uh, South Hadley, um, uh, again, Berry and uh, in Shearborn, uh, Massachusetts. And in all of those, uh, we had non-traditional candidates. In Shearborn, it was a DPW director from uh, another town that was very involved. I, i- in his hometown, he didn't work in his hometown, on the finance committee, on the school building committee. You know, DPW guys, you know, I, I can be a town administrator. And so he was a non-traditional guy and he comes in. And Shearborn's budget was like, you know, ten, twelve million dollars, maybe fifteen million. He said. My, my department, where I work now is twenty million dollars. So, yeah, I think I can handle your, you know, your, your twelve, fifteen million dollar budget. Uh, in uh, another town. Uh, the, it was a woman who was, um, um, uh, uh, the, the town accountant in another town. And she felt that, yeah, you know, I, I see what my town. Administrator does, you know, I can do that. And sure enough, you know, she's. Stepping into um, a town, um, administrator's position. So we've had some non-traditional candidates. Who have experience in municipal government, maybe for, y- y- you know, years, who. Want to step into being a town administrator and. They have the skills and we've had some good luck with, with people, um, who are what, what you might consider as non-traditional. Um, a traditional candidate obviously would be somebody who's, who has a town administrator experience or assistant town administrator. Uh, or assistant to a town administrator kind of experience, but um. So oftentimes, small towns, the uh, uh, people looking to get into the profession. Who have a wealth of knowledge and a background for years and years of working as a. You know, a, a town accountant, a finance director, a DPW director. Uh, I mean, Blackstone. Uh, their, their new town administrator, uh, was a facilities. Uh, director in, was it Weymouth, another town, bigger town?
Wareham.
Wareham.
Yeah.
Um, who just knocked it out of the park in the interview and had, um. As a, a terrific passion for local government. And I'm sure you do find that.
Let me just talk about that one a little bit because I just finished those interviews a week and a half ago. Um. When we brought the finalists to the select board, they didn't have a screening committee. They asked us to just bring the finalists. And remember, this was our second go-round with them in a year and a half. Um, they, they, they had two sitting town administrators. And they had, uh, one other individual and then they had the, this individual Chad. Uh, who was the director of facilities and recreation in Wareham. And the chairman of the board at the time, he came up to me before the interviews and he said. You know, w- why is he in the mix? I said, just go through the interview. Just go through the interview. You'll see. And I can tell you during the interview and you can watch it on TV. Um, this young man, uh, just blew them away with two things, passion and enthusiasm. And we knew technically he could do the job, but his passion and enthusiasm for the position that he held. Just, the, the chairman of the board came up to me after, it was an unanimous vote. He said, I didn't think any of us were going to support that individual, but he just won us over. And he just signed his contract last week, thankfully, but uh. So those are the type of individuals, going back to, to uh, Jason's point, uh, that, that we really try to look for. Those people who are passionate and enthusiastic about all of the things that can be done. In a smaller town that sometimes can't be done in a larger community. So those are the people that would, we would seek out for a position like your position in Southwick.
I guess to follow up on that, obviously we're replacing Carl and there's no other Carl. Do you see a lot of people that come into the small towns wanting this, a longer tenure? Do you see Southwick? Towns like, how Southwick's a stepping stone? What's the general, what feel there?
Always the, always the issue, Jason, uh, of um, longevity and, and people, look. You guys have the hiring authority. You don't want to go through this again. Um, and always ask the question. Uh, can, will the candidate stay here for, I don't know, pick a number, five years, ten years? A- and we always say, look, that's a discussion between you and the candidate. What we can do is bring you the candidate that can do the job. Because when the candidate is asked that question, and we've had this thrown back at us. The candidate sometimes says to the board, can you guarantee me that you're going to be here in five years after we sign our contract? So, as I mentioned earlier in our discussion, uh, things change from a political end. I think if you get somebody and you can get some, yeah, well, there's two things, two characteristics. One, you'll get somebody who's enthusiastic, who's passionate about it, who might be. Might be, not always, might be looking to the community as a stepping stone. We never advise any of these candidates to take a job for two years. We'd say, you may want to use it as a stepping stone, but be fair to the hiring authority and give them three to five years. On the other hand, Jason, you may have somebody who's, um, how do I say this politely? Who, who's at the end of their careers, who may want to give you five to seven years of real experience. And is not looking to go on from there, is looking to retire out of there. Um, but that's, that's valuable, that's a valuable characteristic for a town like Southwick to have. Somebody who, who has done the job for literally their whole career. And wants to come to a community and ju- just provide the last five to seven years of expertise to that community. And then not be bouncing around and looking around. So those are the two individuals, the characteristics I think you're going to be looking at in your. Your field of, of candidates that we recruit. Um, and, and you may get some, you may get some in the middle of their career. Who think that Southwick, and we don't know about your salary range yet, that Southwick is the place. That they really desire for a lot of different reasons, could be geographical, they're moving closer to family, whatever it happens to be. Um, that will stay there longer.
Thank you.
So you just brought up salary. Can we segue there? Um, what is the, the scope of your salary assessment? How far out are you looking? Are you looking in Western Mass? Are you looking statewide to compare?
We, we do, we do all of it. We have the statistics. Uh, any firm that does this will give you those statistics. We just, I'll give you an example. We just did. Uh, a little assessment for Winchester down in Connecticut. Uh, Connecticut's a funky place. They, their pay scales are, uh, 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 well, they're not terribly different than Massachusetts. Western Mass generally pays less than Eastern Mass, uh, simply because of the proximity to the, to the Boston and all that kind of stuff. Similarly, in, in uh, Connecticut, uh, Western Connecticut is, is out there a bit. It's away from the big population, the Hartford's and, and those type of places, uh, not necessarily that far from Springfield. You know, and, and in Massachusetts. So I think your range, I think I looked at your budget and if I'm wrong, correct me. You, you may be up around the one twenty range. I think that you might have budgeted for your position. Is that correct? Kyle, somewhere in there?
Well, it, it is, but I also have deferred comp, so the, the range would, would be able to push it over the one thirty number.
Okay, all right. And, and that's, that's, it's all about the package. You know, it's, it's about the, the, the starting salary, but it's also about the package. You mentioned the deferred comp. Uh, we're dealing with this in Winchester. Again, similar community, western part of Connecticut, ten thousand people. Uh, we just advertise, in fact, the advertising going live today. Uh, we just advertise a one thirty to one fifty. Now that may be a little rich for you, uh, because of where you sit. Uh, but we can talk about that and what's a fair, look, you, you want to have a salary that will attract. Good people. And, and that's what we always emphasize. And uh. Um, and I don't know what that is yet. We'd have to do a little bit more of an assessment. Um, but whatever you offer, if it includes the deferred comp, that's a big one. That's a big one. Um. And a, a lot of people are looking for that, obviously. And uh, a lot of communities are changing the way they, they make those payments for deferred comps. But that's a good one. Uh, it's an incentive for somebody, assuming it's a, it's a reasonable approach. Um, but we'd need to talk to you about the salary range and I think we, we'd pick. Kyle's uh, brain a little bit. We talk about the Small Town Administrators Association out there in your area. Um, and we, we'd get your range and talk to you about that.
And we, you know, we'd want to know who your comparables are, who, who you compare yourselves to. And we'd want to look at your labor market in that area to see what, what communities you think you compete with. And um, so there are a number of factors that would go into the, you know, providing you folks, if that's what you want. Is a range of uh, salaries from your, uh, you know, the, uh, maybe five or ten comparables and then. Reach out to, you know, Western Mass.
I just had a quick follow-up on that. I think, you know, what, uh, just looking around, I think that there's. Five was the number I heard, you know, smaller communities or similarly sized communities. Within thirty miles of us that are in the same boat. Are you, uh, are you involved with any of those guys right now? And what do you advise for a community that's? Number five in that list, as far as, you know, we're just starting our search and they may be in one other phase of that, that progress right now.
Um, we, we are not involved in any other, except for Winchester, which is, you know, you know, similar size.
I'm still in Massachusetts, but okay, yeah.
Uh, we are not, and as I said, we're, we're pretty darn selective. Um, but we, we will, we, we can get that data, obviously, and see where you guys sit. The one place you don't want to be, Doug, is last in the salary. On that schedule. You, 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 and I'm not being a wise ass, you deserve better. You don't want to be last. Because the people who are looking in those four or five around you saying, why is Southwick not paying? And they make the decisions, but not only pay, but people make decisions. On the fairness of what they think, uh, the position should pay in a community of your size. And they all have the same data we can provide to you.
Understood.
Yeah, and as I said, you know, those other communities can only pick one. So, uh, you know, that, that's, uh, if, if, there's, if people are interested. Uh, they will a- apply to you folks.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
One sec.
I have one other question. Um, community input, what's your normal game plan on that? Do you do surveys? Do you do in-person? How do you do it? And, and what do you, what do you think you get out of that? How important is that?
We got, we got, we got views on that for sure. Uh, we're asked the question, um, Buzz, I'll start.
Yep.
Uh, so, look, we, we think community involvement is an aspect of a search. But the final decision is yours. And you're the appointing authority and we want you to be satisfied. So to your question, Diane, um, we have done community sessions where we'll be in town. And we just hope, it's an open forum. And come to see us and tell us what you think as we're developing a, a quote, profile of the ideal candidate. And we get various, various input on that, usually town folks who are involved in your government already. Uh, if that's fair. And um. You know, we take it, we take it for what it's worth and that's somebody in the community saying, I want somebody who I can talk to, who's communicative and. Uh, understands social media and all that kind of stuff because I'm on it all the time. Uh, you know, so we, we get that. Um, and we do that, uh, it, at usually Buzz, the Council on Aging or the library, and you guys announce it. That your, uh, consultants are going to be there to listen to what you folks want. And that doesn't mean they'll get everything they want, but we're there to listen. We will also set up a, uh, an anonymous email system that anybody in Southwick. Could just send it to us, to MRI. It's not a public document. It's on our server. And uh, they can say whatever they want about the search for the new, uh, town administrator. We compile all of that, if there's much, uh, and we've had anywhere from five to maybe twenty comments on the email system. Um, and, and invariably, it's, it's funny, uh, Diane, I know you asked the question. But when we summarize, we don't put names because it's anonymous. When we summarize the thoughts that people sent to us.
We know who they are, right?
The, the collect, the select board, select board, yeah, we know who that is. We know who this one is and we know who that one is. So we know all of that. So to your question, we think it, uh, community involvement has a role, but we, we don't think it should dominate. Because you're the appointing authority, you're the ones who work with the individual. You need to identify the best fit for you.
Okay.
Buzz, am I done?
You know, well, I just to follow up, we like to do is, uh, we'd spend, uh, you know, a day, uh, you know, in the town hall. And we would, uh, we typically like to meet with the, you know, key department heads, uh, perhaps with you folks. Uh, individually, you know, half hour, forty-five minutes each. To get an idea of, of the characteristics, the traits, the profile of your next TA. To find out what, what you're looking for, to talk again individually to the police chief, fire chief, finance, uh, library director. DPW director, whoever you think we need to talk to, uh, to get, uh, their ideas on kind of their profile. Not that they select their own boss, we certainly, we don't think that's a good idea. But we'd like to hear some characteristics that, that they think would be important. And, you know, we're going to hear what we hear every place else. Cooperative teamwork, not micromanager, all that kind of stuff. But, but we give them an opportunity. To voice their, um, their concerns with us. And oftentimes they're going to say, just clone Carl and we're going to be fine. Well. It ain't going to happen. So, uh, but, but we, not only to the, sort of the general public, we give them an opportunity. But the department heads or people you think are important in the town, it could be the town moderator, uh, you know. I don't know, the planning, uh, uh, chairs, you know, that sort of thing that we would have, um. Uh, you know, spend some time in town, talking to them, gather this information, and then this goes into our community profile. Which we would write up and use as an advertising document for the, uh, prospective candidates that, um. You know, we, we, we want to attract. Uh, I think we included one of those, uh, perhaps two in the. Uh, proposal that we submitted to you folks. So, you know, we, we, we look to get input from the community. Sometimes, you know, select boards like yourself, they'll say, no, you know, you don't need, we don't need a community input session. That's fine. Uh, no, we don't want the anonymous, uh, you know, mailbox. That's okay too. And sometimes they say, don't, you know, we, we don't, you don't need to talk to the department as we, you know, just talk to us. We'll, we'll. You know, we'll, we'll tell you what, uh, is up and what we're looking for and, and that's, you know, and that's good as well.
The, the other thing I'll say to that, Doug, and um, is, is, uh, some communities, not all. Some communities will set up, when we announce finalists, and they're going to go to interview with you. They'll want the public to have the opportunity to meet with those three finalists or four finalists, whatever it is. Uh, we generally set that up either a day. Uh, we generally set that up either a day before the actual interviews. And the public has an opportunity to find out who these three individuals are. Once their names are public, it's fine. And the public can come by and say hi to Joe and Diane and all the people that are that are your finalists. Um, and whatever that input is to you as you interview, uh, that's up to you to accept or just say, well, at least we gave you the opportunity to meet these people. But we're ultimately the hiring authority, um, and we're going to make the decision we think is in the best interest of the community. The final thing I'll say on the uh the get together with the department managers. We we don't like a group think session with the department managers. In other words, they all sit in the same room and we say, here's the process. What do you guys think? Our experience and probably yours in the private sector, people are much more candid and frank when you meet individually. Uh, and they know it's confidential. And Buzz and I split up the groups, the department manager and say, I'm going to meet with the police chief, Buzz, you go meet with the fire chief, you meet with the school superintendent. And it's all confidential. We don't come out of that meeting and say, well, the police chief said. But we need to hear what's going on in the departments. Because we want to let the potential candidates know what we've heard and what could be going on in the department that they should be aware of. Because in in one instance, I remember one of the successful candidates in a community which shall remain nameless said to us, why didn't you warn me that the police department was a nightmare? And why didn't you tell me that? And we said, well, we didn't think it was appropriate for us. Uh, the chief, in that case, they didn't allow us to talk to people. The chief never told us that there were problems internally and organizationally. Um, and the person felt a a little bit let down. Because he, in this case, it was a he, uh, was tasked with finding a solution to that problem.
Yeah. Well, I think um I make no promises, but I, at least on the police department side for for right now, I think we're in good shape. Um, and and I also agree with you wholeheartedly, to be honest with you about, um, I've always called it kingmakers. Carl and I have had this discussion with as we go through the recruitment process for different um different people as they as they leave our our employees, you know. They don't get to name a successor and you know, the person that's going to work for this person doesn't get to name their boss either. But so I, you know, but the input's valid, you know, and getting that feedback is really, really important. But um, you know, and we've had some healthy discussion and we're going to continue it either tonight or early tomorrow morning, depending on how this meeting shakes out. Um, you know, on a search committee and what that's going to look like and and how that that's going to be kind of the, you know, the vetting process to send it to ultimately us as the as the hiring authority. So point taken. Thank you.
Uh, it it, can I just weigh in on the search committee? I don't know if you folks, if you've had a discussion or not on the search committee. But we had a situation in the town search committee, one of the department heads was on it. And and we, going through the candidates, the department head said, I can't work with that person. I I I never, I never support. You know, and I tell you, on the way home, Bob and I think, you know, why the heck didn't we talk to that department head and say, you know, zip it, you know, you you don't get to select your boss. And so I I I would just say on your search committee, select the select the search committee uh carefully. Uh, and maybe you do want to have department heads on it, that's fine, but there that it, there can be issues and um uh, anyway, that's just
You're taken.
Parents.
Point taken. We've had, we've had some discussion.
Doug, I I did see that you guys were talking to a number, about a number of people, and I I thought I saw a retired moderator. Um, we we or the current moderator, but we we find moderators to be a wealth of knowledge, especially if they've been long-term moderators in a community. Um, they've got a finger on the pulse, so to speak, as to what's going on in in the community, and we have had some moderators on screening committees who have been um assets, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
You're out of paper anyway.
I am.
I am good, sir.
I guess we'll, anyone have one more question for this candidate? Anyone on Zoom have a question for this firm?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time. Much appreciated. It was very thorough and um very poignant. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again. Yeah, we 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 appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Buzz. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Well, that was an interesting interesting dichotomy. Is that the right word? Now I gotta get back to.
Interesting two hours.
Yeah. Do we have a seven fifteen appointment that we're late for now? Kidding. Um, get back to my agenda. We'll crack out a couple of things here. Do we have exact session today? We do.
You have the chief of police and the labor attorney next door waiting for you.
We did.
Of course we do. All right. Give me one second. Uh, all right. I promised to carry one thing to the end that I missed at the beginning, but let's let's finish cracking off this list. Uh, onboarding, can we carry boarding committee onboarding and duty statement discussion till next week?
Yeah, I I thought Diane was working on the onboarding. The board gave her the the latitude to work on that with Nadine, so we won't be seeing anything come out of that for a while till the two of them are done with that.
The um the uh duty statement is regarding EDC though. But yes, we can.
Oh, the other thing, that's right, on the EDC, right?
Continue that.
Okay, any updates on the town meeting warrant?
Uh, yeah, the the dark this week.
Yeah, there's a new.
Right, Nadine can go over with you the version you're looking at now.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Moving on, yes. I can find it. You all right? It comes, look at me. Um, so we removed, well, we we bumped your article up if it requested, Doug.
Not my article, it's the people's article.
People's article. The article that you asked to be moved is moved. And we took off uh the increase for uh the conservation coordinator.
Took it off?
We're all set with it.
We're all set with it anyway.
Yeah, Laura's got the money in the line item to accommodate that. It's not necessary at this time.
Fantastic. Okay, we will, we definitely will not set a record, though, for the length of the town meeting. That was the previous special at like seven minutes. Um, no, it was more like seventeen, but whatever. Um. Jason, we, in your absence last week, we discussed it, but I promised I'd bring it back up again. I proposed to move the chapter sixty-four uh text as article one. Therefore, if that were to somehow fail, that we could then move to table the zone.
Absolutely, fully understand. That's the whole purpose of it.
I I believe those are the exact words that I quoted you as saying.
Yep.
So that's why I I framed it that way.
Great point.
Um, so I just wanted to run that by and with this complete board to make sure that we're all in agreement on that.
Doesn't necessarily mean the other two would be tabled. The town could just choose not to tax the establishments. But what would be the point?
Well, that would change the whole conversation, in my opinion, based on all of the dialogue that we've had to date. Then we would have to have a healthy discussion around that.
Could do is request that we change the percentage.
Percentage.
Sure. But uh.
Any and all of those things can happen.
So other than that.
Be clear, that doesn't mean.
I mean, you could have a petition on the town meeting floor to change the zoning bylaw too. I've seen those before too, right? So.
Yeah, and just remember that 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 uh language that you have is still going through an iterative process on the zoning related issue between the uh town planner, the chairman of the planning board, and his members, and the town attorney.
And they have not closed their hearing yet, and they're meeting tomorrow, right?
Right, and they may not still close it till this thing is probably near its, uh, they could close it after its posting date and before the meeting.
No doubt, as long as it's before the opening of the town meeting, I believe.
Yep.
Um, so yes, okay. So any other, any other input or comments and thoughts on the uh special town meeting warrant?
I saw none, no concern.
I think I saw the moderator was here as well, online.
She is, she's in the middle.
Yep, so I envisioning the attorneys finishing putting it to form and you having something to sign by Friday, the seventeenth of November. So that can be properly posted under the noticing requirements for special town meetings.
Okay. Um, liquor quota breakdown from state alcoholic beverage commission, beverage control commission, and we got a sheet that you have to paste together to read, that they all line up. And I think there was uh, based on the email, there was some discussion regarding licenses that aren't being used. Do you want to?
Utilize properly. Um. Basically, I want to take a look at it. Um, I spoke a little bit with Chief Landis as to um the enforcement of both the liquor license regulations, as well as I think we need something in writing that basically states uh if you've got a liquor license, it's it, you shouldn't be able to hold it hostage. You know, these, there is some property interest and some property rights for these things. But we that we're the ones that give them out. I think we need to put something in writing, talk with town council, and be able to address whether or not someone gets to hold on to a license. Some of these licenses that are sitting there are what are not being utilized properly. Others have been sitting there for restaurants or facilities that have been closed now for over a year. And other facilities, and it doesn't matter who is presenting these other facilities, I want to make that pointedly clear, this is not towards any individual, but there are peoples that have come forward that want to open businesses or have had uh questions or people come to them that want to open businesses that unfortunately, because of the regulations through the state, you know, we're you know, you can go through an act of Congress, basically, to try and get one, but otherwise, we're limited by the quota per our population. And uh, I want to be business friendly in this town. Uh, we need as many businesses as we possibly can in this town. And if we've got people that want to come here, that could come here, and they need something that somebody else has got and they're not using it, and we can take it away, I'm all for taking it away.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, obviously, if the chief of police in the uh police department, who also acts as the supervising liquor license agent on behalf of the select board, and any member of the board has a concern about any particular license or location being underserved, then generally, what happens is the best way to approach it is cordially and invite any particular businesses in to give an update on the status of their facility and how they're running and managing their 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 license. So.
And as commissioners, that's our right and our.
Yes, I think you've seen it in other communities, especially in Northampton, where you know, a license is is uh looked at to be taken from somebody or for some other reason, because it is a property interest. You want to be meeting with them, having dialogue with them, exercising due process with them.
I was by no means saying we should skip that process.
Oh, I know you weren't, because you and I chatted, and you're all for it.
Yep.
So what's the pleasure of the board here?
Guess what? I would like to do the review of the ones that aren't being utilized, that and then as Carl said, have folks come in and say, hey, what's your long-term plan? Because
Right.
These are things that could be utilized, if not by you, someone else, and we really need to know what you're doing with it. Or what your plan is.
Okay.
And then from there, to develop, look at some of the other communities, look at something that, you know, maybe state recommendations and see what we can or can't do. As well as include Chief Landis and this is he is.
So I can tell you, this came up several years back. And we reviewed when you have some of your places that were kind of running seasonally. And one of the things on the state is your discretion um that if you feel that the business is serving the population um well, um, that, you know, you have some discretion on how that works. But certainly, what they refer to as a pocket license, the term they use, you know, I reached out, it that's generally is not allowed in, so. I I think that maybe it's, you know, understanding on when you you were to invite these people before you is how much do you weigh, do I want to give? Because in the past, it's been some, because, you know, there are ones around the lakes that were kind of allowed to run seasonally.
Understood.
You still want to do that. That was something.
Well, I guess it's a healthy discussion to have. I mean, we have a couple of places that you know, one place is certainly closed, right?
Right.
It it is closed. There's one place, I don't know how often they're open. They've been open reportedly sporadically at best.
Twice this year, I think.
I I couldn't, I don't know the answer, right? And and so I don't know. And then um you know, and then there's one that was, you know, under construction, and now they're looking for uh, according to the widely reported by our uh local newspaper here that you know, they're looking to have someone else come in and and now the property is for sale, but it has a liquor license, hasn't been open for well, several years now, right? Um. And I don't know if you want to, you know, how you approach that and how you look at that. You know, the other places that, you know, that's a different discussion than, you know, and
Uh, they were a different town. I mean, I I I wanted, you know, I think it's, like you said, it's a healthy discussion to have. It's parameters need to be set with everything.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 um you know, some of the, there was a couple uh places that were more uh seasonal, I guess is the right word, right? And we we did talk to council and the chief's a hundred percent correct, like it's up to the town to really decide. It wasn't like, oh, if you don't use it every day, according to the hours on your license, the town can come or the state can come.
You know, you've got that situation with like a banquet hall or something like that. Obviously, that's a different situation. Maybe we don't really have a lot of those, but we have pseudo facilities like such as that, but in more of the ones that, you know, the on-premise type, where, you know, they they're supposed to be, not supposed to be. But should be utilized probably in a more regular fashion.
Correct. And I I guess I don't know how we go about to figure that out as far as the next step, as far as, I mean, if the place is closed, we know, right? But if there's a place that isn't really closed, but it kind of is closed, then we need to have that discussion too. You know, and um.
But you know, if a place has been closed for, I mean, obviously, the one place it's open, it's going to open, and then everything fell through. Others, I know we've got one that's been sitting dormant with no any idea what's going on there.
But um. There's no, no plan that anybody knows of.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a grand plan, grand scheme in place, by all means, let us know and you know, I'm all for supporting you if you're going to do something with it, but sitting on it, and as she said, a pocket license, when I reached out to ABCC, they're they're not really allowed.
Well, the only thing I can add um myself is that it's November. Don't these things all renew in January? So maybe.
Yeah, but you 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 won't have gone through that process to to you know, this is still a lengthy process to do something like this. Now, it's the it's the important thing to inform people that you have expectations during the next renewal period, that any underperforming location even starts to make a headway to um to move the license onto the marketplace uh for a transfer or that in the subsequent renewal year, then they may end up not getting it renewed. That's how you would exercise due process.
And to the longest-serving CAO in the Commonwealth, I would add that that was the other half of the sentence I was going to put together about putting some documentation in with the letters that invariably go out around this time of the year, that we should put that in in print and start the process. I'm not saying we wouldn't not renew a license two months from now, but we would certainly telegraph that, hey, we're, we'd like to have a conversation with you. Um, and anyone else to come in and kind of give us a little status update on your business through the course of a year this next year, as we go through this process and understand, you know, what's working for you, what's not working for you. And, you know, obviously, we can have a little bit larger discussion with some of the, you know, the ones that we that we may have questions about too. Um, but it gives everybody a crack at it.
Good. Thank you for allowing me to read your mind.
Thank you. So, well, we've been working together quite a while, and I Thank you. So, well, we've been working together quite a while and I, I seem to think that that is a two-way street. Absolutely.
We have twenty-nine listed here. One of them has, is listed with two.
Yeah, I saw that. Well, one's package and one's a, uh, I, I saw it too, and I, I.
I'm confused on that one, which we won't get into here, but what's to say we can't have thirty or thirty-one?
What's on the, from the state? There's actually been, it's, it's actually an act of the legislature.
Yeah, it is. That's why I said Congress, basically an act of Congress that things change.
Yeah, this criteria the A B C C uses to.
A lot of it's quota population and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, Doug, didn't we, it didn't we at one point determine we were one over on one, but they weren't going to take it away?
Yeah, right.
Oh.
We're over by one on what they said. It's all good for now.
This was supposed to calculate to that?
It does. It tells you, and you can read all the A B C C rules on how they calculate it. And then if there were special acts that brought things into play, some, some cities and towns have, have gone to the, to their legislative delegation for a special act to increase the number of licenses in their town. At least Springfield is one of them.
Oh, I totally missed that part. Okay.
Yeah, what happens Diane, usually you have to make a really good case that that's part of a, a larger master plan, like an economic development plan to allow, uh, these businesses to have that as a, as a tool to entice people to come and, um, visit their businesses.
Okay. All right. So the question of the one with two could free one up if that's.
I think there are two different types judging by the categories on the left.
I know.
I don't want to open it up and look at it again, but yes, in the general area.
I, I saw it too, and I, I, I had to hold this thing together for half an hour to figure it out what it's, there's, there's P Ks and G Ps and R Ss. So if you take a look, that that's where your, their repetition is.
Yeah. Okay, I guess I need to decipher. I'm not, he's got the key.
So what we can do, what we can do, Mr. Chairman, to Jason's point is if there are facilities that people are concerned about, we could merely have Lisa put them on as a, you know, five or five-minute agenda appointment in our meetings that are coming up and have them come on in and give us an update.
That's exactly what we're thinking.
Good plan.
And I, you know, I do know that the police go into, into a lot of these establishments to check up and make sure everything's in order. I haven't heard any complaints for quite a while. I'm, you know, great job to all those, those operators that are doing a great job and, and running a successful business. And, and for those that, you know, we need to talk to and, and understand where they are and where they're going, let's have those conversations.
You know, they're not benefiting the town just sitting there, you know, so.
But I, I mean, I, I, I don't, they do have some intrinsic value.
Yeah, they do.
But they don't, it's not like, they're not like medallions like they are in other states. In fact, other states have been rapidly trying to reform those laws to de-minimize those values of those things because they can go upwards of millions of dollars to have a license and, um, it, it becomes prohibitive to others that want to open a business. No. Well. Okay. Carrying on, uh, I lost my agenda in our discussions here, but I know the next item was the census. Um, I, I, I like the code red part on the, um, and I love the idea of, I, looking at this high-speed internet again. However, we've done this once and if we do it again, I'm not, I don't have any objection to it, but I'd love to have a little, keep this simple, do it online, have a Q R code, someone could use their phone or type in the web address to go and type it in and just do it online. I, I'm, I am done compiling surveys by hand. I did the last one. I don't want to do it again. Um, and I think we, I think we can get with.
We can just put the Q R code on this, you mean?
Yeah, and just have, either add another thing and then have a little section for this piece. But we don't need to have the actual, I don't need people to return this with their census like we did last year with the marijuana one.
Yep.
I think we got half of them online, half of them in paper. Um, and it took a really long time to put the paper ones together.
Nope, that's a good idea. Like your progressive thinking.
Trying. And I don't, I don't think this, this is going to tell us. The marijuana one last year had a different split than the online and the in-paper. I think we went through all that and those numbers when I presented the data. I don't think you're going to see that with this. I think you're going to get, um, I, I personally just don't think you're going to see, um, a huge disparity between online and in-paper version from the survey as far as the results.
I want, I don't.
Right.
Yeah, just, just.
Well, like we said, are you in favor or opposed? And you had, you know, it was like forty-eight and fifty-two and then fifty-two and forty-eight on the other. So, but I think this is a good idea. And I also want to, um, I'm going to reach out to somebody. I want to ask them just about this part because they've gone, we've done the survey work already. We've gone through town meeting and got the, the M L P established and, and everything else. I want, I want to, we think we have an idea of what that take rate would be. Um, a lot of things have changed, are changing. So I don't know if the price point's going to be almost set by the, by what we're paying and what the debt service is going to be, subject to, you know, you know, it's going to be in that eighty-dollar range somewhere right around there, eighty or less.
People are, my point is I want to know if people are going to tolerate that rate and sign up. And this would hopefully give us that temperature.
What's interesting is they thought that just the other day I read in the paper too, cable was a dying animal.
Frontier just sold, right? Or somebody just sold their cable business.
A lot of people have just completely dumping cable.
Cable, right.
Yeah, so I mean, and when I had it, when I lived elsewhere, it's definitely worked. I think people, once they get a feel for whichever way we go, they're, they're going to want to come on with us. And it, what's nice is I don't know if it's something we, we would negotiate, obviously. You could, if you come in early, you, over there, you locked in for life. It's, you know, that's something you could entice people with as well. So, good point.
Um, so in terms of the other, uh, potential item, the other subject matter, we would take that type of material and have the emergency management director who had brought this up in an L E P C meeting, um, just customize it because right now it, you know, we need to make sure if we're encouraging people to go online and update all their profile information for the calls they want, that, uh, we need to provide the specific contact information and process for them to do that. Not just that document you have in front of you, which is generic to the company.
Yeah. So would they customize that back blank space?
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how Director Anderson would do that, but I'm, I'm just trying to get from the board their willingness to have an insert regarding people's need to update code red. And then we would task him with preparing that document to provide to the town clerk.
I think, Doug, my opinion is yes, and I'd also like to see added the, um, do you want, one other checkbox, would you also like to opt in for like community alerts too? Not just, hey, this is on fire or there's, you know, this is going on or what have you. If there's a community alert, because there seems to be a fine line with that and some people tolerate it and some people are upset about it. Or maybe we can get a little more granular and the code red does have that capability.
Yeah, that's true, Mr. Chairman. Generally what happens when a person actually goes on to the site, they can customize how they want to be contacted and communicated with. And a lot of people frankly do not want the telephone call. They just want a text.
And that's fine. And that would be great. And let's get that here. But I also think that is one thing that you are going to get paper ones back rather than people just going online to code red.
And when we get, and when we do get those, we still have a way of inputting them manually to assist those people.
Agreed. Agreed.
So does the board endorse that flyer? In concert.
I do want to make a motion to endorse the flyer.
Endorse the flyer.
Right, some code red process developed by the emergency management director.
Code red, yada, yada.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
That was a motion and I'll second that motion.
Uh, Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
There you go, Carl.
Thank you.
And we get a lot more flexible from quarter to night.
On the other two, what do you want to do real quick?
We're going to leave some room for this piece.
Yep.
And then I, I'm hoping we'll have this filled by then. And then, uh, what was, yeah. I'm hoping we have this one filled by then and then this will shrink this down and have a little Q R thing. That's my thinking.
All right. Are you okay with, with the verbiage on the code red and?
I, I leave it to the emergency management director to, he, we're going to give him three quarters of the page to do what he needs to do. And that's probably what people are going to fill out and send in. That's why he needs more room. This was kind of just, well, that is mostly from the, uh, Unsolved or whatever the name of the company was. He's going to need more room than that, than that little bit.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, uh, I thought I mentioned this, but I didn't. Town hall, town volley, yeah, I know. Christmas, holiday season parties. Town volunteer staff holiday party gathering twelve fifteen at four thirty. Oh, that's right. We put you in charge of it. You weren't here last week. At four thirty in the auditorium. So, this is a meeting, this a lot. Um, Jason is in charge with Nadine of organizing the town volunteer staff holiday.
Did I really get put in for that?
Absolutely. You'll have help. Don't worry.
That's all right. It's my favorite time of the year.
So, but it's for all, it's for all, oh boy. All the, uh, town volunteers, elected volunteers and staff. We have a gathering on that Friday at four thirty. So just wanted to get that out there.
And I will not be in Las Vegas this year.
And we will cycle back now to the recruitment panel because we had some healthy discussion on that previous. We had some good input, I think, tonight. And can we perhaps get that laid out and put that at least so we can contact the folks that we want to have on it? And I don't have my notes, but I did remember, and I, in no particular order, uh, and by the way, the, the gentleman from New Hampshire mentioned having a former moderator on there.
Yep.
So.
There's an endorsement for that.
So I had a former moderator. Does anybody still have their notes from last time? I know you did.
Moderator, I know we did.
We had the moderator. We had.
You.
Select Board Chair.
Did you have Planning Board Chair? They also mentioned that.
Did, had.
Yep.
Probably got to let him know. Just kidding. He's all good.
We were looking for the one resident business owner.
And, and we had a couple of people said that they would indeed do it.
Greg Hamlin.
Greg Hamlin.
Builder, you know who he is.
I do not know Greg Hamlin.
He is a builder in town. He's very active on the green.
The greens, east and west.
He's.
Hamlin Framan.
I, I have no problem.
And, and Mr., and.
If you guys are going to vote for Mr. Hamlin.
And Mr. Coward.
And Mr. Coward. I, I, I know Mr. Coward. I, I'm not opposed to either one if. Um.
So which one of those two are going to be the business rep?
Mr. Hamlin because I don't know. Uh, but I mean, I.
And then Doug, I know they were talking about whether you should or shouldn't have a department head on the panel, but you had distinguished, um, the chief as the, um, co-equal of the C A O role under the organizational chart.
Well, you know what? If you had.
We didn't ask you.
He's in.
Was he willing? Well, if he's in, then.
So that gives you seven if you do the two business reps.
There you go. Cause I'm split, I'm split on those two for two different reasons.
So there you go. You could have.
Were we picking both or two?
You could have seven.
So if the chief is in, I think that works to everybody's satisfaction.
If we're going, we'll go.
All right. So let me read it out loud. So we've got this square.
Okay.
We've got former moderator Putnam.
Yep.
Town, uh, madam moderator, select board chair, planning board chair, Mr. Hamelin, is it Hamelin or Hamlin?
Hamlin.
Hamlin and Mr. Coward and Chief Landis.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
And you.
I, I had select board chair. So if you want to go by name, it's Jim Putnam, Celeste Saint-Jox, myself, uh, Chairman Doherty, Mr. Hamlin, Mr. Coward and Chief Landis.
Right. I just, I just want to clarify that you're no longer seeking a representative of the schools.
No.
Okay. Well, then you're, then you're still at seven and you're fine.
So, but don't sell past the close. I need a motion.
Make a motion to, to appoint those members as the selection committee as you read them, sir.
I'm very happy to second that.
And I'm glad we're able to build a consensus on this. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
Done. Okay, we are. Done? Oh, wait, sorry. I have a couple of things. We got a couple of old businesses. Do you have any, Jason?
I do not.
Diane?
I.
Did you, uh, was the board going to take the interviews from this evening under consideration? Wait till another date or were you going to decide one on one tonight?
I defer to that. Let's cover old business and come right back to that.
I have no other old business to discuss.
I have none.
Carl?
No, we, we just went through it. I'm good.
Okay. Well, I just have a couple of quick things. Well, we already talked about Veterans Day.
Yep.
Um, happy birthday today to Emergency Management Director Russell Anderson, which also means that today is the one-year anniversary of, uh, Chief Rich Stefanowitz as our fire chief.
Congratulations to both of them. Let's sing happy birthday.
No, let's not, absolutely not do that in the interest.
I started out the morning doing that.
Listen, um, switching gears though, uh, we did have a devastating house fire in town on Halloween. Um, thank you to the Southwood Fire Department for the rapid response as well as the Southwood Police Department and our mutual aid responders from Westfield, Granville, I believe Agawam, Southfield, the Lost Acres for all coming to our community, um, and helping fighting that fire and also, uh, covering our station while Southwood Fire was out. Thankfully, no human lives were lost in that fire. Um, I also want to commend the Southwood, uh, D P W and our partner Crestview Construction, um, for coming out and working well into the night, that night, uh, repairing multiple water main breaks on Granville Road as a result of, uh, the fire and the, the water consumption that was needed to, uh, during fire operations. Um, and thank you to the Granville Police Department, um, for handling traffic well in the night. And it was getting bloody cold out, um, as D P W and Crestview made, uh, repairs on a very, very busy street. And I know we talked about at the beginning, I might've said it already, but reminder again, Veterans Day Parade, eleven o'clock, uh, next Saturday, the eleventh. Uh, please come out, thank our veterans. Um, hopefully the weather will be good, but it's always a great day to come out and, uh, and see the war memorial and, and, and give thanks to all those who have, uh, served our country and thank you to you for your service. That's all I've got. Now we want to come back to the, um,
Sure.
All right. We had two interesting interviews, huh?
Quite.
Yes.
Thoughts?
Jason? Out loud.
I, I was impressed by both. I mean, but they both had their, their, I don't really didn't see low points to either one. I mean, little bit of difference in what you got. Really by the end of it, I was leaning one way more to the other. Um, and I just, at first I wasn't sure, but, um, I'm kind of leaning towards municipal resources personally.
I am leaning that way as well. I like their selective clients.
They did their research.
And they fit our profile and they did their research. They listed a bunch of stuff they reviewed from our website and news articles and things that were going on here.
They did.
To make their selective choice to submit their.
Yes.
Their information.
Like you said, you know, that's when they said they focused on towns in our special, you know, that's their specialty that, that kind of sold me. And like you said, the, the fact that they referenced, you could tell they cared. It's enough to look into it.
And they're not working on a lot of different towns at once. And they seem to be coming back with more possibilities than the other guys. They're talking about they get eight or twelve. And they're talking twice.
Twenty or thirty. And I, you know, I was going to ask what kind of resources they had in the area. Obviously they're, they, they utilize all their resources and rely on past resources. So. they, they utilize all their resources and rely on past resources. So.
I agree. Am I right?
Carl?
Yes, sir.
You have any thoughts?
I mean, obviously they're two good firms. They have seasoned managers on their staffs that are Massachusetts managers. So it really is something that the board has to take into consideration and, and obviously my role in this is not to, you know, make any recommendations that relate to any of the steps along the way.
No, I just was curious if you had any observations along the way here. Obviously we talked about kingmakers and not doing that and we get it.
I did look at the other towns they provided here and they are very much like us. One of them is also known for gunpowder during civil war. Many of them have lakes that they deal with. They have like management issues. So they're familiar with our recreational issues, bedroom communities. They're familiar with what we would be needing, I think.
So, and if, if I'm not mistaken, these are the two that interviewed for the Rutland spot too, right? I know it was Community Paradigm because that was, I remember that gentleman and I think.
They are, Mr. Chairman.
So Mr. Gould was the one who did the interview for the, for the, for Rutland, not these two gentlemen that came tonight.
They did. Yes. For police.
Well, it was.
Rutland Police.
That Rutland Ramona, Rutland Mass.
Mass.
Could be wrong because I thought it was this, this firm. Because it was, the owner was the, was a police chief. Anyway, it's irrelevant. I just, interesting because the interviews went very different.
It is. It is. It's Community Paradigm.
That's it for the year. Folks, I went right. But yeah, I think it was a very different interview than, than, than the Rutland one. If you watch that tape, because it played out very differently in my opinion.
So what happens is once the board makes a decision on who they want to select, then the Nadine and the chairperson can open up the price proposals and then we'll go from there.
Correct. And so, and that's a good point to, to bring up, Carl. So we are not even aware yet. Neither are you, correct?
Yep.
What is, what these are going to cost based on, we're going to pick the firm first. We assume that they'll be in the ballpark, but we haven't seen it. So this has been blind to, to that piece of it yet. So I guess, well, just, you know, for those watching and playing along at home. Does someone want to set forth a motion here?
I will make the motion to select municipal resources as our consultant for the new CIO position.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. It is a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.
It's unanimous. You guys can crack those tomorrow. Okay. Anything else before we roll into executive session? None. Okay. We are going into executive session. And well, I'm doing that after this. A motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, 2, 3, and Chapter 214, 1B, Labor Council Litigation Matters and Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Fire, IAFF, PPW, you first, Non-Union Staff and Clerk Union, UPS EU. Executive Session, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, 2 and 3, Chapter 214, 1B, and exception number two, move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene an open session. And the chair is declaring that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And move to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session, discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and to not reconvene an open session. And per Chapter 214, Section 1B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. That's a motion. Would anybody like? Diane?
I'll second the motion to do that.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Dan Gale, aye.